And the city charges all security costs to the event holders plus an administrative fee. So there is no impact on the overall budget to the field house. Staff has been very satisfied with the services provided by this vendor. Item four C. Consider a resolution approving a cooperative purchasing agreement with Craftsman through buy board contract number six seven nine dash two two. For the purchase and installation of a splash pad and general site improvements to Armstrong Park in the expenditure amount of two million one hundred and twenty, uh, twelve thousand dollars. One hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety cents. Armstrong Park improvements were approved in the two thousand eighteen bond election and the city and the park consultants Dunway and Associates have worked with the park design craftsmen since the early stages. Craftsmen will provide and install the splash pad and general site improvements, including demolition of the existing kidsville, safety surfacing, flat work, masonry site utilities and site furnishings such as benches, tables, and shade structure. Craftsman is based in Spring, Texas and has an outstanding reputation for its splash pads and park construction. Funding for this project is supported by a reimbursable grant through the Texas Park and Wildlife of nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to the approved bond funds. Item four D. Consider a resolution approving a cooperative purchase agreement with T F Harper and Associates L P through buy board contract number five eight one dash one nine for the purchase and installation of playground equipment.
If you can see to read, please continue.
I'll continue, okay. All right, so, uh, similar to the previous item, the city and parks consultant Dunway Associates have collaborated with Leather's Playground to design a new playground at Armstrong Park similar to the existing kidsville. The leather was the original designer of kidsville in nineteen eighty-nine and based on significant citizen feedback, the community desires a similar themed playground. T F Harper is the Texas installer of leather playgrounds and based in Buta, Texas. T F Harper will provide the new playground and its installation. All other work will be performed by craftsmen. Funding for the project is also supported by a reimbursable grant from the Texas Parks and Wildlife of nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to the approved bond funding. Item four E.
Oh, city manager, Mr. Harvey has a question and then Mr. Koontz as well. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, so, um, my question is as we go through the capital, uh, project process, each phase of it. Will we, uh, can we expect to get a report every quarter indicating the progress that has been made? And also how much money is remaining to be spent? And if the project will be completed on time and under budget?
Uh, I will ask parks to come, but I will say the project is already behind schedule, so it won't be on time. But I can say that if you all desire quarterly reports, we certainly can do that.
We do include a page in our quarterly report that talks about bond projects, so we will certainly include all the information you just mentioned in those, in that report.
Thank you, Bob.
Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mary. So, uh, I noticed in the report that the available budget for this item is three million and then the purchase amount six hundred and ninety-eight thousand. It says afterward, there's two point three million left, so, uh, is that correct? And is, are there any identified uses for those funds if that's what's remaining after the, if this has been funded?
Um, finance has put all of the bond projects into one, uh, account number, so that's for all of the bond projects that are remaining. Um, so all the, the monies will be spent for Harrington for the most part. So we'll be working on that project next. Uh, we're working with our consultant now to identify phasing potentials and come back to the council and talk to you about that. Something like you requested at some point, uh, to come back and talk to you about phasing for Harrington Park, so that's the next step.
Okay, so, so that amount there, that two point three, that's for the Harrington Park projects?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. City manager, please continue.
Last, uh, four E. Consider a resolution authorizing a contract renewal for food and beverage services with Ben E. Keith at the Duncanville Field House in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. The Duncanville Field House purchases food and food, food and beverage services products from Benny Keith for the sales and operations of the grill and general store. Due to significant increased sales and increased cost trending, the expected expenditures are projected to grow to one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. Staff has streamlined the procurement of food and supplies to one vendor several years ago to ease staff oversight of multiple vendors along with the increased opportunity for volume pricing. Staff have been very satisfied with Benny Keith. Item four F. Consider a resolution of the city of council for the city of Duncanville, Texas awarding a contract through R F P twenty-two dash zero zero three two for janitorial and porter services at Duncanville Field House to Global Building Maintenance Inc. Located in Dallas, Texas in the unit amount bid with an estimated expenditure amount of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty cents. Staff completed a sealed bill process for janitorial services at the Duncanville Field House on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Two bids were received and reviewed by staff and Global Building Maintenance provides the best value to the city based on the cost and service levels included in their proposal. The initial two-year contract is estimated at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fourteen thousand, three, that's all mixed up, dollars. It's all mixed up. The contract includes two one-year renewals should both parties agree to continue the contract. Services include day-to-day cleaning of facilities, all supplies, and one-day porter services for weekend tournaments and events. Global Building Maintenance is located in Dallas, Texas.
Uh, one moment, Mr. Harvey has a comment or question?
Thank you, mayor. Um, Global Building Maintenance, do they have a track record of working, uh, with similar type buildings comparable to our Duncanville Field House?
I will ask procurement or either, uh, Mr. Bart? Could you talk about?
Yeah, I, I do recall, and I, I was one of the, uh, staff members who had to review the bids. And yes, they have extensive experience, not only in Dallas, but in numerous states around the country. So Dallas is one of their offices, actually their head offices, I guess, in Florida. So, uh, they are a, a very big company, well-known.
All right, thank you, please continue, city manager.
Item four G. Consider a resolution approving the fourth and final renewal contract nineteen dash oh one, Unex LLC for traffic signal maintenance with an estimated expenditure amount of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. This agenda item authorizes the fourth and final renewal contract dash nineteen zero zero one, uh, for traffic signal maintenance. Seaman Mobility Inc. transferred its Intelligent Traffic System Division in the United States to this company in two thousand twenty-one. They have assumed the city's existing contracts. Services provided under the contract include large-scale traffic-related construction and maintenance. The scope of the service performed is outside the abilities of the traffic operations division. One of the first projects staff will assign to this is to repair highway lighting infrastructure at Highway twenty between Cedar Ridge and Cockrell Hill. Seaman, the parent company, is headquartered in Germany but has locations in Dallas and Houston. Item four H. Consider adopting an ordinance of the city of Duncanville, Texas amending the code of ordinance by amending chapter sixteen A sign guidelines. Article eight, rules of specific sign types, section sixteen A dash thirty-five, political and election signs. The city attorney, working with the city secretary of staff, have defined a need to revise language related to political and election signs on private property, on public property right-of-way, and election signs at polling sites. Prior to the proposed change, a candidate was allowed to canvas or engage another person by verbal exchange or with a brochure to advertise political message. Now it declares that no person is allowed to canvass another person by verbal exchange or with brochures as it pertains to any message or advertisement of any kind. Prior to the proposed changes, election sign was not defined in the ordinance. Now it declares the meaning of election sign and its usage. Prior to the proposed changes, the definition of the political signs did not clearly state election signs as a political sign. Now it declares to include election signs as political signs.
City manager, we have two questions, first Mr. Contreras, then Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, mayor. Um, just for, uh, clarification to the public and specific to the, um, the use of the words and the definitions of the words political sign versus election signs. Could we expand a little bit on the intended impact that we're looking for by making this, uh, change? Attorney?
Mayor, I can do it.
City, yeah, city attorney.
We have regulations in town and have had for a number of years that did not permit signage within city-owned property and city right-of-way. Specifically, it does not allow any kind of sign for any purpose within the public domain. The legislature, in their infinite wisdom, told us that if there's a polling place, uh, during the period of the election, that we could not, uh, regulate political or election signs within the polling places. So a few years back, we made that correction in our ordinance that, and specifically with the library and the schools are generally where the polling places are. We went ahead and allowed election and political signs in the polling places, but only on the times that those facilities were actually voting centers or polling places. Cause that's the only time the state law applies. So what was happening is people were putting up signs that were unrelated to, uh, the election that was being held at that particular time. So they'd put up political signs, but not about anyone that was currently running for office, federal, state, or local, or a proposition, or a referendum, or a constitutional provision, um, that was on the ballot. So they were putting up, they were taking advantage of turning the polling place into another venue for political signs. So this just corrects that to bring us into what the intent of the state law was, is to allow political signages, in particular, election signs at the polling place. And that's what we're doing by changing this.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, mayor. So, uh, Madam City Manager, I imagine that as is our tradition and custom, there will be a candidate orientation to educate, alternate, whatever. Uh, the various candidates on the rules and expectations to be followed when running a political campaign?
Yes, sir, and we'll also make sure, cause I know it's a little complicated because we've added this, is that we also have some brochures prior to the election season that we get out to the general public so they'll understand. Cause it's, the candidates get a chance to see the briefing, but some of the people who may call saying this is wrong or right, uh, will need to know it also. So we'll be working with our communication office to ensure that it gets out to the general public also. Thank you, sir.
All right, one, one other thing, just, um, just an idea just popped into the top, uh, top of my head. I'm just wondering if, uh, maybe we could, uh, have each of the candidates sign a little letters, uh, saying, I have read and understand, uh, the requirements of running in Duncanville City Council elections. Just an idea.
It's something we can consider, we can talk about it. It's a suggestion being made here today, we can put it on the agenda item for something in the future. I think we need to do it very soon though, because in January, candidates are going to be filing for the May election. So to take, so, uh, I'm thinking, as was said by Mr. Contreras and city attorney yourself, the packet that we put together for candidates seeking election, it's going to be expanded and augmented. And at the same time, we can consider putting some type of statement in that before. Very good. Oh, Mr. Contreras, yes, sir.
Uh, just one, uh, point to make to that. The difficulty and the challenge with, with, um, selecting one group that may come to the orientation is that oftentimes these elections include elections, uh, they could be school district, they could be, um, county, federal, state. So there's no way to really inform those representatives for those different individuals that are running to get the same type of acknowledgement from them that they've read and understood the rules as well.
No, I, I understood Mr. Harvey's question, it's only those that's seeking election in the city of Duncanville. Now, when it comes to the signed ordinance itself, we can't really enforce those individuals that are not seeking reelection, uh, or seeking election or reelection within the city. You may be talking about judges and so forth and constables and, and we see, we're replete with signs around the library when it comes time for election.
Yes, sir, there's still, there's still subject.
The enforcement of our ordinance then is going to be something for the city manager to take a look at.
Thank you.
Okay? Continue.
Item four I. Consider a resolution authorizing the application of acceptance of the Dallas County Municipal First Responders Mental Health Program grant for Duncanville first responders, including foreign police personnel. The U S Department of Homeland Security recognizes that first responders at the federal, state, and local levels are on the front lines of providing support to their communities during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. First responders have provided and continue to provide critical services in response to the pandemic. While they often operate within high-risk and dangerous contexts, first responders are more likely to die by suicide than in the line of duty. Suicide is a result of mental illness, often stemming from constant exposure to death and destruction. Farther increased, uh, death due to COVID-nineteen and its impact has inevitably led to an increased exposure to death and dying, uh, for first responders. Working these front lines, first responders have been disproportionately impacted and the trauma incurred as a result of their work needs to be addressed in order to provide quality and for their essential contributions to be maintained. At a time when both demand and suicide rates of the population are increasing, life-saving mental health support services are critical for peri- and post-pandemic recovery. The Texas Department, State, State of Texas announced that the distribution of state FY twenty-twenty-three first responders' mental health program grants to local governments, but resources are limited, and the parameters of the program have been changed to reflect this. Unfortunately, few, if any, in Dallas County municipalities are expected to be recipients. Dallas County has authorized, under chapter seven ninety-one Texas Government Code, to contract with other local governments for government functions and services. Following the execution of an inter-local agreement with Dallas County, recipients of A R P Act funding will be expected to adhere to the funding requirements and reporting procedures. A total of one million dollar allocation is being applied toward this mental health initiative, of which twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars is allocated for the city of Duncanville's first responders. A per capita formula was crafted to calculate the allocation available to each potential grantee. There is no city match to this grant.
And looking at the entire packet, the distribution of that money was identified dollar by dollar for all the cities within the county?
Yes.
And Mr. Harvey, yes, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is a grant and after a period of time, grants go away. So will consideration be given by the city to continue to fund and provide these services to our, uh, first responders after the grant goes away?
I, I believe that, uh, the city has several programs, but I know that we've got to look at other opportunities as we have been, uh, exposed to it, not just for first responders, but within our city staff. Uh, we have placed a lot of focus on mental health issues in our city. And so we will continue to look at it and if the grant goes away, look at ways to continue these efforts because it is important to our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on to briefings and presentations. As I mentioned earlier, we're moving items A, item C, and item D to the end of the city meeting under staff and board reports. So at this particular time, we're going to take item B, timeline to create a special designation land use for the land property. Presentation. Let me stop for just a moment. Um, we've made a commitment, we, the city, I, in particular, have made a commitment to some particular individuals who have arrived and they're in, uh, uniform. And the commitment was made to them that we would be able to give them some recognition at seven o'clock. If we take the next item, which is a very important item, and have a discussion and saw the content of that item, it's probably best that we defer and take what I want to do at this particular point in time, which is the mayor's report, which is going to exceed three minutes. So, uh, city council, in accordance with our rules and procedures, I'm going to be moving certain agenda items around. We're going to actually, to do this, we have to actually open the city council meeting. So with that, I'm opening the city council meeting for December the twentieth, that timestamp will be seven oh five. And in terms of making this an official city council meeting to follow it, we need to have our invocation. And the invocation is with Reverend Ginger Herzenstein Connolly. Please rise.
Uh, mayor, before, just for the record, since you're still in workshop, we'll consider the workshop recessed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mayor Gordon, council members, leaders, members of the Duncanville football and their coach and citizens, please bow with me in prayer. God, tonight, we welcome you to this room. The task for these leaders is to bring goodwill to all neighbors in our city. So with this prayer, we turn to you to request that you guide them in building our community up. It is a season of hope, a holy season because of your imminent presence. A famous carol puts it this way. "A thrill of hope, the weary world rejoices." We need that thrill of hope, for our world is collectively weary. Filled with burdens of pain and sorrow, loss and grief, violence and distress that seem to know no bounds. Yet with you, God, our weary world receives the invitation to rejoice. Tonight, impress upon us what we have, not what we need. Help these men and women know that when they look up, they look to a God who can ease their burdens, their fears, their powerlessness, replacing it with victory in relationships, in caring, in sharing, in laughter, in giving. And let us rejoice in every new day. Let us rejoice in our victories that we experience. Remind our mayor, God, our council members, our police, and our citizens that they are not alone. We are in this together, and that as we all join hands with each other and with you, God, we can accomplish more than we can ask or even imagine. Thank you for the birth of your son, Jesus, in whose name I pray, amen.
Please join me in pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one individual. Please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, as I previously mentioned, in terms, in accordance with our rules and procedures, when a report is either a mayor's report, or a council member's report, or city manager's report is going to exceed three minutes, a vote has to be taken on that by the entire council to permit exceeding three minutes. So city council, I am asking for a vote to allow me to exceed my three minutes for the mayor's report for a special presentation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Contreras, a second by Mr. Koontz, council, please vote. And this is a vote simply for extending my three minutes on the report. Inanimously approved, thank you very much. All right. Can you hear me? All right. Flexibility is the key, is that right, coach? Always. Something very special happened Saturday night, and that was a very special event for all of our lives here in the city of Duncanville. And our state championship football team is here with us with some personnel tonight. And in particular. And in particular, I want to recognize the head coach. Mr. Reginald Samples, would you come up forward, please? I'm not going to explain Brooklyn, New York on your cap though, that's, that's your job, if you choose to do that. So I have made a proclamation and I'd like to read it. Proclamation for the city of Duncanville. Whereas Coach Reginald Samples has been a football coach in Dallas County for thirty-two years, six of those years in Duncanville. And whereas Coach Reginald Samples has accumulated three hundred twenty-six victories as a head coach at Madison, Lincoln, Skyline, and Duncanville. And whereas the Duncanville Panthers football team went undefeated fifteen-zero for the twenty-twenty-two season. And whereas Dave Campbell of Texas Football labels Coach Samples as the godfather of Dallas football. And where. And whereas, on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, Coach Samples led the Duncanville Panthers to the Class Six A Division One Championship, defeating Galena Park North Shore twenty-eight, twenty-one. Therefore, as mayor of the city of Duncanville, I do hereby proclaim Coach Reginald Samples as a champion of the city. And therefore, do proclaim December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, as Reginald Samples' day in the city of Duncanville. In witness thereof, I have and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Duncanville, Texas to be affixed this twentieth day of December, twenty twenty-two. Coach, we appreciate you. And along with that, we have a key to the city. Now, this doesn't open much. In terms of the budget, it opens a little bit. But we want to present this to you as a very special occasion, and while we do this, if you would ask your folks to come up and introduce them. These are members of your team you have selected to come here tonight. Coach, we enjoy having you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you very much.
I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you guys for having us here. Uh, it is truly an honor to be here and represent Duncanville. Uh, I will say this, that during my time here at Duncanville, uh, it's been amazing, uh, because it's made me feel nothing but like I'm with a bunch of my family members. As I go around to the different places, the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, uh, I get nothing but support. And, you know, sometimes this job, working with these young men can be stressful. And I have to admit it because it's not always positive. But it always makes you feel good when you go home with a little stress and you know that you have the support of the people around you from, uh, our athletic department, our athletic director, Ms. Landers, our principal, uh, Mr. McDonald, our superintendent. And just everyone in the Duncanville family makes you feel so comfortable. And that's, that actually really makes my job a little bit easier, just to know that you have support. Support is big in anything that you do, knowing that people are behind you. So I'd just like to say to you guys, thank you very much for having me here in Duncanville. Uh, I brought some young men with me. Uh, first of all, I would like to say that, uh, we were just found out this year, we have seven, uh, young men that were named on the academic all-state team, and that is truly an honor. That is, uh, that's probably the highest number that we've had since I've been in Duncanville. And all of these young men are honor roll students and they're all doing well academically, and that's part of what we want out of these young men. And I must say, they're pretty doggone good football players too. So what I, I brought my, uh, three captains, uh, Jabrian Peters, he's a senior. Vernon Grant, he's a senior. And Noah Ponce, another senior. These three guys have taken on important roles because I just believe that if you're a leader, you have to have enough courage to speak to your peers. Uh, sometimes, you know, like our own kids, they get tired of hearing us say the same thing to them all of the time. And it kind of takes something out of it when the adults are always saying the same thing. But one of the things that I asked the captains to do is I explained to them, it means something when you, on that. it means something when you, on their same level, tell them that they're doing things not the right way, or they're doing them the right way. So I put a lot of pressure on them to help enforce some of the things that we would like to do and some of the things that they are not doing. And I've just been so proud of them that they've taken on those roles very well. I also brought two other young men with me that I'm very proud of. And both of these young men were named Most Valuable Player in the state championship game. The first young man is our running back. Both of them are juniors, so the prospects, we, we, we want back-to-back. We want to win another. First of all, our running back and Kayden came to Duncanville as a sophomore. He moved here from Oklahoma with his mom, and he's been outstanding ever since he's been here. Unfortunately, last year, when we went to the playoffs, Kayden was hurt around the last game of the season, and he didn't get a chance to play. And we felt like that really hurt us. But Kayden, I think he, he almost, I don't know, I don't keep up with yards because to me, that's not the most important thing. But I know that he's close to two thousand yards. And I do know, I found out the other day because it is important, he scored thirty-three touchdowns. Oh, he reminded me, add the three from Saturday night. Thirty-six. So the, I'll introduce you to the offensive Most Valuable Player in the state game, Kayden Dur. The second young man, he's been with me at Duncanville ever since he's a freshman. He came from Byrd Middle School. He's grown up in Duncanville. And he's been, he's been a special player all the four years that he's been at Duncanville. You know, we've gone back and forth. We've had our battles because he never disagrees with the position that I asked him to play. He's always saying he wants to play something else. So I have to remind him that this is not a democracy. It's a dictatorship. And what I say, he's going to play. That's what he's going to play. And, but, in the same light, he is, he has been named the number-one defensive end in the nation. So I'm not going to brag on my choices. I'll just let the facts remain the same. So this young man, he'll tell me, how many sacks do you have this year? He, he has over twenty-five quarterback sacks. He was a complete terror Saturday night. As you know, the quarterback is the most important person on a football team. We just have to admit that. And he is a quarterback's nightmare. And so he's just been a great player throughout the year. I, I say all the time, you know, they, Kayden and Colin, they have two different spirits. Kayden is the kind that, you know, you almost have to encourage him to say, because he'll just say, we're gonna, we're gonna do it. Colin, you have to say, not so much, not so much. And, but he is a great player, and he was the defensive Most Valuable Player in the state game, and that's Colin Simmons. And I don't want to take any much of, much more of your time. I just want to say, you know, I am so proud because the thing that makes me feel good is that when I look back behind me at almost every game that we play in Duncanville, the stands are full, and that's support. And it just makes you feel so good that you know that people are behind you. They're pulling for the kids, and you can't help but give that extra effort for the people who come out and support the team. So I will tell you guys, thank you so much, and please keep coming. We, we love it. Thank you so much. Oh, and I forgot. We did bring gold medals for all of the council members. Come on, Coach. And the mayor.
Thank you, sir. I want to conclude and let you know that we're going to, this is a very, very special night. It's a very special night for Coach and the gentlemen that are behind us here. So we're going to recess our city council meeting, and we have some refreshments in the briefing room, and do that, but I'd also like to recognize three very important individuals that are here as well. They are trustees on the Duncanville Independent School Board. Jackie Colton. Cassandra Phillips. And Janet Veracruz. And also, there's a very important executive here, Connie Williams. She has a title this long, but she works with us in the city very, very tightly. Connie, we appreciate all you've done for us. And before we have more pictures, and I want to have every council member be able to shake these guys. Don't break their hand. But let you know, the city and the Duncanville Independent School District have collaborated, and we're going to have a victory parade in the city, January the thirteenth, Friday, January the thirteenth, at seven o'clock at night. It's going to be just like the Christmas parade. We're going to make it big. We're going to make it great. And we're leaving the lights on in Armstrong Park with our tree and all the things there, so it's going to be a wonderful evening. Put that on your calendars to come on out and have a great time with our football team and the parade that we're going to be doing. So... So I want to get some pictures, and then we'll recess. Put a timestamp on it. City sec, oh, where is she? There you are. Let's go ahead and congratulate these folks, then we'll have some refreshments, then we'll come back and continue. Refreshments are in the briefing room. Out in the lobby. Okay, we're out in the lobby. There's someone else I forgot to introduce. I just saw her. Ms. Anders. This is the interim athletic director for the Duncanville Independent School District, Kenya Enders. And she's one that we really had to convince to do the parade.
Yeah. Not at all.
Not at all. We'll get our technology back up. I know this is a little confusing, but we are going into, we're going back into our briefing session. So reconvening our briefing session at seven forty-two, the city council meeting is still in recess. So going on with item two B in briefings and presentations, timeline to create a special designation land use for the LAD property.
Mayor and council, at our last meeting, council directed staff to work together as the second part of creating our nature preserve is to come up with a briefing to give you a timeline of what are the steps we need to take in order to designate this land as a nature preserve, as well as reverse the other zoning. Mr. Tennant has worked with our economic development director and our planner to come up with a schedule. All of this is subject to time and availability of individuals, but he will be presenting this to you this afternoon or this evening.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tennant.
Honorable mayor and council, can you all hear me? Okay, perfect. All right. So basically, we wanted to provide you all with a seven-step process. Where staff, when we came together, identified as a mechanism of moving forward with the process that was invited to us. The first step is to conduct polling meetings to gauge the perception of the community idea, I mean, the opportunity eight, opportunity eight area. As you had, as you've identified in the comprehensive plan, this is an area that was five years ago identified as a opportunity area. What we're referring to now is the LAD property. So we want to make sure that we meet up with the, the boards and commissions that also chimed in on this particular entity five years ago. That would be the Economic Development Corporation, to Keep Duncanville Beautiful, and also the Neighborhood Vitality Commission. Well, we have on our list before you the dates that they commonly meet. And of course, this is for Economic Development, January the third, the twenty-seventh of February, and March the twenty-seventh. And to Keep Duncanville Beautiful, their dates of meeting are January the sixteenth, February the twentieth, and March the twentieth. And Neighborhood Vitality Commission, January the twenty-fifth, the February twenty-second, and March the twenty-second. These are the dates as they are, as set on the calendar as they are currently. Step two of the process is to get input from the, the strategy from the comp plan. This is ironically tied into what we're currently doing with the updating of the comp plan, where we can tie this conversation in, of course, with the other conversations that we're having with throughout the city, with how we look at reviewing the comprehensive plan. This was projected to end, it happened at the end of it, the previous meetings, between March and April of 2023. Then we're looking at initiating the zoning change request to amend the current PD plat. As this is currently a PD ordinance ten seventy-eight that currently allows for office and retail on the site as it currently stands. We're looking at this projected timeline to occur in March, at the end of March and at the beginning of April. The next is an application for a zoning change and tax amendment to be filed by, to be filed by city staff per the direction of the city manager. The timeline for this is looking for at March, end of March and beginning of April. Next is preparing a case report after we sent out the notifications to the surrounding property owners, which have been two hundred feet as we currently do for any type of PD or SGP within the city. This would be also going out to our newspapers as well for the zoning change requests to go before planning and zoning. The timeline for this will actually be at the end of April and the beginning of May. Planning and zoning commission timeline for them to consider is projected in June of 2023, based upon notification requirements. That's why there's a delay in that regard. And also, the final step would be that of city council considering the zoning change request and a tax amendment as projected. Timeline for that currently is July of 2023. I'm here, I'm here to stand for any questions. And this right here is a slide before you, which has everything condensed on one slide for easy viewing. If you have any questions, I'll keep this slide up so that way you can look at it and ask any questions pertaining to the timeline using this slide as your reference point.
I have a comment. Mr. Harvey, first, please.
Thank you, mayor. Going back to step one on your presentation where you listed the various boards and commissions.
I think it was slide twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
Twenty-six. Yes, thank you.
The way, the way that these commissions are listed, is that the sequence? It, it has to go to EDC, then Keep Duncanville Beautiful, then Neighborhood Vitality Commission? How, how does that work?
No, there's not a consecutive order. If I'm hearing your correction, your question correctly, sir. It's just making sure we meet with them on their timeline. Currently, their timelines are certain particular times in a month. Like Keep Duncanville Beautiful had a meeting yesterday. They're scheduled for the, this, the, the third, this particular week of the month. Neighborhood Vitality Commission is set for the fourth Wednesday in a month. These are the timelines they currently meet for their business as it currently stands. There is a potential for them to have special meetings, like all boards and commissions do throughout the city, but we're using this as a conservative timeline based upon their current, their current meeting schedules as we present this for you, towards you all.
So we could conceivably go January sixteenth, January twenty-third, and January twenty-fifth? Since there's, since, since it's not listed in sequence, we could go sixteen, twenty-three, twenty-five?
You're referring to each individual group, sir, or?
Yeah, each individual group. KDB, January sixteenth, EDC, January twenty-third, and NVC, January, January twenty-fifth.
For that first meeting in January, yes, sir. And there, of course, is a conservative metric of, like, there is an introduction to the, to the boards and commissions so that way we're introducing, explaining to them what the process is, what the requests are, and then give them opportunity to actually provide feedback and collect their, their comments as we proceed forward. That's the reason why there are three meetings scheduled on here currently.
City manager, you had a comment?
And one of the things that we have talked about is where we can have joint meetings. I know some of you have already asked that question, if we can do things jointly. And where possible, if we can get two boards together, that will also expedite this process.
Anything additional, Mr. Harvey?
Skip down to the comprehensive plan. Yeah, there we go.
Step two, sir?
Yes.
Yes.
So what's the impact of that on the process?
The impact of the comprehensive plan is currently, as it states right now, this is designated as an opportunity area, to be more specific, opportunity area eight, which of course allows for certain allowances for parking and things of that nature as it currently stands of our CZO. And it's currently, there is a consideration to take a area that has been identified in the, five years ago, as office and retail, to now being something that would be more open space, something that would be more nature preservish, if you will. So with that aspect stated, we're trying to look at it from the standpoint of looking how this is going to affect our comprehensive plan, because there was one time, at least looking at the, at the documents, one push, and now we're looking at another push. So we want to make sure that we are updating the comp plan as long as the CZO and the land uses as well.
So, so...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, help me understand why this is not a separate track from the comprehensive plan update? Because what's going to happen with the LAD property involves the comprehensive plan that's currently in effect. And then, as a, as a separate matter, we are doing another comprehensive plan. So why are these, why are these, which appear to me to be two separate tracks, why, why are they on the same track?
One is the comprehensive plan. The other one is the comprehensive zoning ordinance. Currently, as it stands right now, there's the PD, which is what was mentioned earlier, for the, for the plan development that's currently on the site. But there's also the comp plan, which is basically that thirty thousand viewpoint of where the property was looking at it previously. Well, that was not looked at as a single family. It was not looked at as a open space. It was not looked at as anything that would be fitting within the metrics. If that makes, I'm trying to, it's not sitting within the metrics of what is being, what we're looking at, potentially, what we're looking at, if you will, as an open space potential or a nature preserve. Does that, does that explain it to you, sir?
I gotta let it marinate some more. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, is it, going on with Mr. Harvey's thought, possibly, cannot the comprehensive plan seem to be updated by staff and brought to the city council? cannot the comprehensive plan seem to be updated by staff and brought to the city council almost immediately? Without going, without going through P and Z, EDC, and K and B, KDB?
It can be, but we're in the process of doing it now with the comprehensive plan updates currently. So we're just basically mixing this as one of the things that, like, any comments that occur in the comprehensive plan update. If somebody wants to say that they are looking at a particular property or a particular area to be X, we're bringing that forth, we're commentary as well, with like, as we bring for the other items.
I think, Mr. Tennant, what we're looking for, and our attorney can clarify this, is there a legal requirement to do any of this? Other than just letting council update the comprehensive plan, and maybe our city attorney can answer that, not you.
Legal for it to the attorney.
Yes, um, under, uh, chapter two thirteen, requires an ordinance change and requires a public hearing. So the comp plan, let me see, let's go back. The park master plan is part of your comp plan. And so this is going to affect your park plan if you designate this as open space or preserve or what, whatever you do, if you designate it, anything other than what it is now. So that's one component. The other is the zoning. So if you change the comp plan and the park plan, now your zoning doesn't match your comp plan. And so then you have to change zoning. Both of these things can run during the same time. We've done that before, so that, but they have to be separately advertised, and there has to be separate public hearings, and both have to go to P and Z. It says in cities where there is a planning and zoning commission, they should make a recommendation on amendments in the adoption of the comp plan. So we could run the zoning component and the comp plan component together. That can be done. Okay, so if, if I could make a request, then, uh, as, as we, after we adopt this process, then, uh, can we and the public be provided ongoing reports every council meeting as to where we stand in this timeline? Whatever timeline we adopt? If you adopt a process, yes, you can require it to be updated by staff on where we are in this process. The statutory processes under the state law are the statutory processes. So there's, for zoning, we have to give notice to the public specifically within two hundred feet of the, in this case, the LAD property, as well as publish, uh, a notice in the newspaper. The comp plan requires notice published in the newspaper. So there'll be a hearing on whether or not to amend the comp plan, and then there'll be a hearing on whether or not to change the zoning ordinance. Cause there's a PD that requires for non-passive uses on this property, retail and. The property has constraints through deed restrictions, but there's zoning on top of the property as well as what can be put there. So those will have to be changed. And, and thank you, counselor. My, my, uh, last statement underscores, uh, my desire, since this has been a very visible process, that as we go through the process, that we be visible as well in terms of the progress that's being made, and that's directed more to, to the city manager and staff. Thank you.
Could we go to the last slide, Mr. Tennant? Uh, Mr. Contreras, I see you need to make a comment. I think, I don't know if we spent enough time on that last slide.
You've referred to groups, oh, to a slide, I mean, it's gonna be step seven, sorry.
Well, the what, the slide is, there it is, that one right there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know if we spent enough time. We moved pretty quick and didn't take a look at this particular slide. I think this is the sequencing that we need to understand and digest to see exactly how this is going to be going in sequence. Because as Mr. Harvey, uh, commented on, I think we all understand that the, the processes, one process depends on another. And until those processes are validated by public hearing and by actions of those individual commissions and boards in this council itself, we can't move forward with those until something is done privately. So looking at this in terms of the understanding of the hearings, um, we would have, where would the public, okay, where would every, which one of these steps, seven steps would involve a public hearing? Step number two, as I understand it, that would involve a public hearing?
Yes.
Number three would definitely involve a public hearing. Number four would definitely involve a public hearing.
And number seven, and number six.
Seven, yes, all the way through. So each of these, going back to Mr. Harvey's comment, it is, you know, the, the expeditious pro, the expediting the process as much as possible, seeing that we're looking at this not coming out. Well, in fact, if the publishing of an ordinance isn't even on this chart. So the publishing of the ordinance can't occur until July of August of twenty-three? Would that be a fair assumption?
From a conservative measure that we took, yes, sir.
Okay. City manager, is there any consideration or understanding on your part in terms of the expectations on staff to be able to meet these dates? Uh, some of them are pretty aggressive in terms of public hearings, the presentations, uh, to P and Z, to EDC, to KDB. Each of those presentations require a great deal of amount of preparation, because this is one of the most important things I think this council may undertake, uh, in our next fiscal year. So looking at the, the burden of expeditious process on your staff, what would be your comments on that, please?
Staff has been, as they prepared this last week, have been given this as a top priority. Uh, the council has spoken. And we're gonna do whatever we can. We are working with individual boards and commissions and ensuring that we make sure we have a quorum. That is gonna be the biggest, uh, challenge, but we will move forward and look at having special meetings or whatever meetings it takes to make sure this is done, if that's the wish of council.
Okay, uh, Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the city attorney said that, um, two, these two processes could work in conjunction. And that being the case, and I know this is a kind of a ballpark question here, but that being the case, what would on page twenty-seven, can we go back to that? Projected end, what impact would, um, would we, would we see a significant decrease in the amount of time in this entire process, um, from this projected end date of March and April? If we did it, uh, did the two processes?
The, the process that you have here is, this is, to me, more of a town hall meeting to take comments from the public on what I would assume we would like to see in opportunity area eight, which includes a LAD property. Okay, and then at that point, you would receive that comment, and then you go to step three or four, and the council has to initiate the changes on the comp plan change. So you would pass a resolution directing the staff to amend the comp plan, and opportunity area eight, the master plan, master park plan, and the, and the comprehensive plan, to consider amending that document to reflect the nature preserve, if that's, okay? And then also you would have to initiate a tax amendment, cause we gotta define what a nature preserve is. And then we have to change the zoning. That resolution directing those three activities, the tax amendment, the zoning amendment on the LAD property, and a change in the comp plan could be done at one meeting. Whenever you all decide you want to initiate that process. Staff's telling you they want input from the public. We're getting buy-in at the beginning, not at the end of the process this way. So in three and four, then you, as the council, will direct staff to undertake the statutory and ordinance requirements to go through the legally required processes to change the zoning and the comp plan designation for this property. To consider it. Even if you vote to do those things, doesn't mean you have to vote for it, it's just you're initiating the process.
Well, mayor, I'd ask you, with that response, um, what the process on this council would be for, um, getting a consensus? Is it a vote or a consensus of council members to, um, combine these efforts to expedite this process?
Well, the steps you have, we can fill that in. That's the sequencing. I think the sequencing's fine. And step three is when you can begin the initiation process of the comp plan, master plan, park master plan, comp plan, and zoning changes. Then there's statutory requirements. There's thirty, there are meeting dates, times, when those entities meet, you only meet. Uh, I would assume you want to do this at regular meetings, so someone doesn't accuse you of trying to, you know, there's a rhythm to all this. The P and Z meets at a certain time, so that their items come to us in a timely fashion. So you have to, these are the steps, but the sequencing is based on your meeting nights, based on notices. And that process, the zoning process and the comp plan process, take anywhere from forty-five to ninety days, normally. So when someone walks in the front door and files an application, then we gather enough information to do the notices. We send out the notices, uh, set the hearing dates before P and Z, your hearing date. And then if there's any issue, developer, the landowner, uh, needs to take, pump the brakes, then we got two weeks, then we have to re-notice everything. So the sequencing and the timeline is not completely crazy, but I would assume we would run these two things together. One, it's very efficient, two, it's very cost efficient.
Alright, thank you.
I, I think we need to step back for a moment and remember where we're at in this process. And that is that the city council directed the city manager to provide to the council on this date a proposed timeline for the enactment of an ordinance. And that's exactly what the city manager and staff have provided to us today. Uh, I think this is an excellent timeline that's been given to us because of the complexity, the legality, of making sure this is done correctly. There are some aspects that say, well, you know, some cities have done it a little differently. Well, that's fine for some cities, but not for the city of Duncanville. We're gonna do it right. Because as I said in my introduction, uh, at the last city council meeting, we want an ordinance that is defensible, it's strategic, it's sensible, and it can withstand objection if anybody wanted to try to change anything. So this takes time, it must be done well.
Working with staff, excuse me, mayor, one of the things also, we have deed restrictions on this property that other properties may not have either. So we've got to be very deliberate and contemplative in how we approach this from that standpoint as well. Cause I don't want to do anything in the zoning or the comp plan and only to create another problem for ourselves on the, on the deed restriction.
I think we can step away from this with the understanding that city manager has complied with our request as a council to provide us with a proposed sequence of events. And I think that's done, been done very exceptionally well in terms of the difficulties that can be encountered. The public hearings, I think one of the things that was mentioned, that city manager mentioned, we could have, I think it was city manager mentioned, that the KDB, P and Z, and EDC could have joint meetings. And putting those joint meetings together could really expedite this process. Of course, you know, getting quorums together for those particular ones is, is always an effort. But there again, in terms of what we want to do, I think it would be most expedient for us to try, as city manager to, and, and the liaisons, the staff liaisons with those particular organizations, to come together as quickly as possible and to be educated as quickly as possible. Now, some of them may not even understand where we're at in this, in the process. Uh, so an education is gonna be critical, particularly for P and Z, because of the zoning issues. And knowing that, uh, those zoning issues have to be very, very contemplative in how we're gonna approach that. So, um, yeah, Mr. Contreras, then I, I want to add a little bit more, but go ahead, Mr. Contreras.
Well, I want to make sure, make it clear that I, I absolutely respect the amount of work and effort that's gone into this, uh, at our request, and I appreciate that. I'm not trying to, by any ways introducing other thoughts, um, diminish the hard work that y'all have done. It's very well planned out. I'm just hearing things tonight that I would like us to take into consideration as we're thinking about this, um, that take an opportunity to expedite where we can expedite. And by joint meetings and by working, uh, in tandem with, uh, two different processes, um, I think we can improve on the timeline, but that's just me speaking. There may be some other legalities that, uh, don't get us that much farther ahead, but at least I want to introduce a thought, since we've heard those things tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, and that, that's, it's, has quite a bit of merit as well. And I'm gonna say that we gave the staff two weeks to do this. And here again, we always emphasize that it is a proposed plan. And the, and the reason that we're coming together tonight to look at this proposed plan is to air it out. And that's exactly what we're doing and what we have done. So I know that city manager and staff are listening to this and will do everything they can possibly to combine meetings, to work things, and to make processes, uh, more fluent as much as possible. Mr. Coons, please.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, just, just, so I'm clear, um, so for us to, I think it's pointed out in step seven, even at this point, we haven't actually, there's no ordinance here for us to approve even at step seven. Uh, is that correct?
No, sir. There is no order, sir, considered this evening.
So according to this timeline, once we get to July twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, there's still no ordinance before us to approve. So what, what's the step after step seven to get to the approval of the ordinance? What happens after that?
Well, that's what this process is for right here, sir. It's basically a step process to get to the ordinance that you're referring to. There is these meetings in first where we have the community meetings, and we also have the conversation about the CZO, the comp plan, and our attorney brought it forth as well, and even the conversation about the deed restrictions as well, so we could, um, wrestle it out, so we can provide an ordinance that is actually something that everybody can move forward with.
And then the only, and this question was already asked, but the only, uh, legal requirement we have before passing the ordinance is changing the zoning. Legally, I know there's a comp plan and the park's master plan, but it's a zoning component that we have to, that we must do.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and I'm hearing that we can run the comp, comp plan amendment and changes parallel with the, the zoning. So, and I know Councilman Contreras asked a question, you know, this could be expedited, and if we can get some kind of consensus, uh, from the council, if we'd like to see that, uh, process expedite, expedite in that manner. Um, it, in steps one and two, so conduct public meetings, um, and then process public input pertaining to opportunity area eight. So we need more public input than we've gotten in the last year and a half. Like, it's, that's the question I'm asking. Do, do we need more input than we've gotten?
Some of the aspect of that is requirements, is what's statutory and what isn't. And I think we're gonna have to look to our city attorney for the, to do an answer for that. The zoning issue in terms of what statutory requirements are for that is the most pressing issue that we have. Uh, going back to one issue that you raised up, Mr. Coons, I think it would be possible to look at step seven. You know, an entire month is shown in July twenty-three. I think it would be possible, if we could even move this up into June, and say in June that we could have the P and Z commission continue to change. That could be the first meetings in June, and the city council could actually come together and have in the second meeting in June, we could have the ordinance processed and brought to us. So that would drop in a little, in a, a month off the, of the sequence that we see here. But I think there's no question that city council, I'm sorry, city manager and staff are hearing our comments tonight. And what we are looking at is a proposed plan with implementation and augmentation as necessary where they can see it be done. Uh, and at the same time, we know the importance of this particular action. The publicity it's received, the visibility it has in our city, and understanding that the staff has other responsibilities for operating the city. So I think looking at what they've done here is commendable and acceptable to the extent that they now understand and hear our comments tonight, that wherever times can be cut short, they will do so. I'm confident that there's no question that they are hearing that, and they will look for any way to make these things happen as fast as possible and as legally as, so we have to have the legality into it, and conferring with our city's attorney to ensure that there's going to be an ordinance that is culminating in this process that is going to be the very best that the city can have. Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, mayor. So, uh, some of the things that I've been hearing along the way kind of underscores uh, what I said a few moments ago. Uh, what we have before us is a very good beginning. It is a beginning. I think it's important.
I think it's important for us to achieve success with this is to have the follow-through. And so this is a beginning, this is a framework. And so it would, it, I think it would be good for us and the public to constantly be updated as to where we are uh, in this process. We've done step one, now we've got to do step two. And we have a firm date for the steps as we go through the process. This is a framework, and then we need the, the follow-through subsequent to this.
Understood. City manager, um, I'm going to turn to you to kind of close this out in terms of you've heard our comments, you've heard the thoughts. You hear, Mr. Coons, you still have your light on. Do you have another comment?
Uh, yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So on, uh, on step three, the zoning change request, text amendment, so, uh, what's, what's a particular, uh, zoning that we're looking at for the property? So it's not going to be a PD anymore, what's it going to be?
That would be something that we would consider after we get everything together. That's one of the reasons why we wanted to start this process, so we can actually initiate it. As of right now, there hasn't been no application, so I can't answer that question specifically at this time.
And then I know it was mentioned that, you know, that other, other cities with other, with preserves do, do different things, but, uh, just, just from my education, so what, when we look at other cities with other preserves, what are they zoned?
Uh, there are some that are zoned, single family, there are some that are zoned, open space. Uh, it just varies based upon that municipality and how they've actually decided to move forward with their process.
Sounds like illegally. Sounds like illegally.
I would not judge. I won't yield to that answer, sir.
Maybe best to describe that as problematic, that a city went and under, and undertook to create an ordinance without looking at the zoning. And someone can come into a nature area, a nature preserve, and start building mixed-use buildings because they didn't properly execute the processes in order to come to the execution of the ordinance and its fulfillment. That's why we're going to do it right. To close this, I think it's best, uh, city manager, I just, I wanted to come back to you. Uh, as I said, you've heard, uh, this, the, the sense and the tenor of the council. Uh, this is a great start. We asked for it. It was, we asked for it in two weeks. And understanding the amount of work that had to come into this, looking at the comp plan, the parks master plan, the zoning, the P and D, everything has to go on with this, uh, I think it's commendable work. And we would ask that any, anywhere that is possible to shorten some timeframes, we know that you would actually do that for us.
Yes, sir. Uh, and, and as Mr. Maghrenet, who's not here, will say, in talking to Mr. Vera Cruz, who represents this district, uh, that was one of the conversations he and I also had as far as how we get them together. And what we will bring back to you, and I'm, and I'm listening to what Mr. Harvey has requested, is we will add specific dates, but we'll also send out notice before, right away to all of the boards that will be impacted by this, to let them know of dates where we can combine dates and, and what. And so what we will commit to do is at the second meeting of each month, to have, uh, Mr. Tenet to come and give an update on this, on the list, so that everybody can find out where we are, and where possible, we will try to combine. Uh, where possible, we will also try to eliminate any steps that are not legally required, and so we will commit to that.
City attorney, I have a, a fleeting thought. I'm going to throw it out, and I'm not sure of the answer. We sometimes have problems getting quorums with KDB, P and Z, and even EDC. If a joint meeting is called for, and one of those commissions or boards fails to present a quorum, is it possible then that they would forfeit the right? And we would continue on with that meeting without their input, so that does not stall the process?
All but the planning and zoning commission. You can't.
So, so if we have, so let's understand it. What I'm asking for is, it's the council understand, and staff as well, and the city manager, that trying to expedite the process and having joint meetings between KDB, P and Z, and the EDC. We call that meeting. Those individuals that fail to show up forfeit the right to participate in the process, except for P and Z.
Uh, I can answer this, that there will be no legal impediment to the end product because those boards didn't meet and have any input.
Okay, very good.
May have political implications for you locally, but there's no legal issues that would be created as a result.
So there, there's an opportunity, and I think these, uh, you know, EDC, P and Z, and KDB need to understand that this is so important that they show up. If they don't show up, they forfeit the right to participate, except for P and Z. Okay. All right. As I said, uh, this was a proposed, uh, plan put forth. City manager, I would know that you hear the center, the tenor and sense of we, us as council. And, uh, with that, no further comments. We will move on to another subject. All right, so we are in the briefing and presentation section of our city meeting right now. So we had intended to move items A, C, and D to staff presentations. However, I think probably looking at the times that we have now and pres- individuals present, maybe best to go ahead and put those back into the briefing and presentation time, still in the briefing session. So if council is agreeable to that, instead of moving these to the end, we'll take them now, because we're in, actually in a briefing session. So, okay, so city manager, we're looking at item A, two A, briefing presentation on a proposed revision to the city's overtime policy.
Mayor and council, I have asked, uh, been working and meeting with our public safety department and even our city staff. And as we start to look at some of the things that we've done in the past and things that have happened over the past two years with COVID-nineteen, we've discovered some things that have been a problem for our staff. And so, uh, one policy that exists, which is a policy that was implemented by city management, I've asked Mr. Ote, based on feedback from both our fire chief and our police chief and our public works director, to look at our overtime policy. And so she's going to give you just an overview of what exists and what we're proposing. And based on the feedback, it's something that I think will go a long way in supporting those individuals. Good evening, everyone. Okay, so just a brief overview of what overtime is and who governs, um, overtime. So the Fair Labor Standard Act is, uh, Department of Labor is the one that governs, um, overtime rules. And per the, uh, the act, hours suffered or permitted to work is considered work time and must comply with overtime requirements. That is the basics. Um, one and, one-half times of the regular rate is due when hours exceed the threshold below here. Um, what is standard for overtime, usually the seven-day work period. Um, for the city of Duncanville, Sunday through Saturday is our seven-day work period. So that would be those that are like public works, non-exempt employees that are not shift employees. Um, the second, um, uh, shift of, of, uh, is for our police shift, and that is an eighty-hour, um, overtime cycle, which is a fourteen-work day period. And then our fire shift is a twenty-eight-day work period. Um, and what overtime is, is anything worked over two-hundred-and-twelve hours. So under the FLSA rules, under section seven K, um, allows exemptions for law enforcement and for firefighters. So seven-day work week for a forty-hour employee, fourteen-day work period for a police shift officer, and then a twenty-eight-day work cycle for a firefighter. Those are the three different, uh, work periods that we define here in the city. Our current overtime policy, leave time, vacation, sick, holiday, emergency leave, things like that, are not counted as actual time worked for the purposes of computing overtime. This is a standard, um, across many, many cities. So what this means is employees, if they work overtime, they're called into overtime. They also took vacation in the same work cycle, that they are not receiving the half portion of that time and a half. Okay, they're still receiving a straight time, but they're not receiving that half portion premium of overtime. So I reached out to some other cities within the state and within the region, wanted to get an idea of what they do. So I received forty-one responses from cities around Texas. Out of those forty-one cities, only sixteen, um, count some sort of leave time into their overtime calculations. Um, nine out of those sixteen cities count holiday, they count vacation. And there are two cities, actually in the metroplex, Hurst and Grapevine, um, that allow all leave types into their, um, overtime calculation. So again, if they take leave time, it doesn't count against them for the purpose of computing that time and a half overtime premium. So what this leads to, our challenges is, so for example, fire, they have mandatory overtime when they are down employees, they are out, they're on vacation, they're sick, whatever the, um, and they have to work overtime that's mandated. They don't have a choice. They got to come in. We got to staff, we got to serve the city. Um, and they had leave time, say, in the previous, um, two weeks before, you know, that counts against them. They're not getting their time and a half. Um, they have to request their leave time, you know, up to twelve months in advance for any holidays and vacation throughout the year. So it's not like they can just call off the, the next week and take a vacation day. So this leads to, you know, low morale of the staff. So, you know, they're mandated to work the overtime, they're mandated to use their holiday leave time before the end of the year. So all of that just contributes to, um, the morale. So with the proposed policy change, um, we're asking for all leave time to count as hours worked for overtime calculation. So here's an example of a firefighter pay. So we get paid bi-weekly, so every other week, okay? So for firefighter pay, it can be a little challenging because you have cycle one. So that's the first two weeks of their pay period, okay? Um, they may work ninety-six to a hundred-and-twenty hours typically for a shift. So in the first example, they're in the blue, so cycle one, this particular firefighter worked a hundred-and-forty-four regular hours, okay? Cycle two, they worked twenty-four hours, and then they also took ninety-six hours off, okay? They worked, you know, twenty-four hour shifts and they're off two days. So in this equation, based on our current policy, um, when you add those only regular worked hours, it gets you a hundred-and-sixty-eight hours. So they don't get overtime pay in this scenario, okay? So if you look at the purple, with the new policy, with the same firefighter, cycle one, so the first two weeks of their twenty-eight-day cycle, they worked a hundred-and-forty-four hours. And the next cycle, the next two weeks, they, um, the twenty-four hours and the ninety-six hours count towards worked hours. So their eligible hours are two-hundred-and-sixty-four. In the previous slide about the overtime, anything worked over two-hundred-and-twelve hours in a cycle is eligible for overtime. So in this example, that would put them at fifty-two overtime hours. And so I went back and I calculated manually, um, a variety of, a, a couple of pay cycles to get an idea of what this cost would be. So in this particular scenario, that firefighter would get another seven-hundred-and-ninety-four added to their paycheck. And just in that half portion, okay? So, can give an estimate of what that budget impact would look like. So the majority really is more the fire department. Um, the annual, uh, impact, I estimate about fifty to sixty-eight thousand annually to allow for that half portion premium. And all other departments, um, about forty to sixty thousand. We have, uh, we're nine people down currently in police, and we have three in fire. Three, yeah. So this would, uh, definitely be absorbed with the vacancies that we have currently. Some other quality considerations that we want to think about and come back, um, to help mitigate maybe some of this cost is allow for maybe a comp time in lieu of overtime for non-exempt staff, as well as, uh, flexible scheduling that could help with, um, overtime, so. Do you have any questions? It's kind of, talking about payroll and overtime can be a little complex, but.
Go back to the, to the chart.
This one?
Yeah, that one right there. I'm having some difficulty digesting the fact that when I take vacation leave of being paid, that goes toward my regular time worked, and it's going to end up in my overtime calculation. You're saying that that is a standard practice for first responders and all staff in municipalities, or where does that come from?
FLSA, the minimum is you have to pay overtime for actual hours worked. Obviously, when you're not here, you're not really working, you're not working. So it is pretty common, um, that they're not paying half, that half time and a half, um, when they also have leave time in the same work cycle. That's pretty standard. So I, like I said, I, I reached out to, to some cities within the state of Texas and in the region. Only sixteen out of the forty-one that responded to me, so, um, twenty, thirty cities, they don't. Lancaster, um, they don't count leave time in their overtime. Um, DeSoto only counts holiday. Cedar Hill does not count leave time. So it is, is pretty, pretty standard that, um, that if they're not actually working, that that's not considered a part of overtime calculation. So this, you, you, an employer can go above and beyond what is the minimum requirements of the law. So this would be going over and above.
But you have proposed that we do count that.
Yes, I'm proposing that we do.
City manager, help me out, please.
So, let me give an example, uh, not use even fire. Let's use a public works worker. Uh, during COVID, there were times where if you had been exposed, we send you home. You may be until your test comes back out for one day, sick leave. But then we have an ice storm, and you've had to work twelve hours and fourteen hours. You're not paid overtime for those hours once you've taken that sick leave and added it to your eight hours. You're not paid overtime for the sick leave or the annual leave, but those times where you may have had to stay overnight and work, that's where your overtime would kick in. So what's happening is they're working overtime, but they're not paid for it because they had to have a day off of work, or they had mandatory, uh, leave that they had to use. And so what we're saying is, in a forty-hour work week, if you work forty hours, and if, if eight hours of that forty hours, and you only were working thirty-two, but then you're called in to work overtime, you also get overtime for the extra eight hours. And so we had stopped paying it. We did it one time, but one of the cost-cut measures when we hit a recession, like many organizations did, is we started looking at ways that we could, uh, save funding. And so, uh, in speaking with our staff, one of the morale challenges is that you call them in to do overtime, and it doesn't work. Uh, one example in which we were using this is in dealing with our ins- fire inspections. And so we have many of our individuals who can help us to do our inspections. And what we were offering to do is if they would do it, not during work hours, but after hours, we would pay them overtime. But it falls into that same category. If they've had one day off for any personal reason or any other reason, that would not technically qualify as overtime. And so it's an administrative policy, and in, I call it the low-hanging fruit type of thing. It's something that will go a long way in building consensus and, and good support for our public safety individuals and our staff as a whole. Uh, and the cost is minimal, and it's something we can absorb. But we wanted you all to understand it because you may hear people say, well, I don't want to do mandatory overtime, or I don't want to call, come in because I'm not going to be paid for it. And so that's why we were trying to adjust this policy.
Extraordinary circumstances, I don't have a problem with. If you're on vacation and you get called in for whatever reason, be it streets or whether it be first responders, that I don't have a problem with.
That's when you have to do overtime. Are you, are you working overtime, you're not paid for it if you're taking off.
But that's not what, like, it's not what's shown on that one particular slide. It's like, you know, the, it doesn't say anything about extraordinary circumstances, which you pretty well explained. And I don't have a problem with. But if somebody's on forty hours of vacation leave, and they don't get called in, those forty hours of vacation leave are going to count toward their overtime portion of pay.
No, 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 no. Forty hours is just regular time. The overtime is anything beyond. Go back to the first slide.
Explain this term bank holidays.
So, um, the city, you know, gives, um, holidays to employees, ten, eleven holidays throughout the year. So, you know, they don't take off on Christmas, they don't take off on Fourth of July, you know, we, um, the typical staff we do when the city hall is closed, they are still working, so they have to take their holiday at another time. So this is like a, a bank of time of holidays that we give them up at the front of the year to try to u- use when they can.
And if they don't use it, we don't carry those over. So, and unlike you and I, we may have a holiday coming up on Thursday and Friday. They actually get them in a bank, and they can take them, but if you're short of staff and they can't take them, they just lose that completely. So in many cases, they'll try to take their holidays. So we're saying, we're only paying overtime for days which they've worked. We're not paying overtime on vacation or sick leave, but if they've taken any vacation or sick leave, they don't qualify for overtime.
Has this been articulated in writing anywhere to understand what those extraordinary circumstances, circumstances are and aren't, and when this would come into play? As you've just explained it, I'm getting it. I'm beginning to understand. But for me, you know, it's like, I would like to see some kind of written explanation of what you've just said in terms of the application of the, of this policy that's being proposed to us here.
Well, and, and so we currently have, we, we reversed a policy that was already existing. And so the policy basically states that they do not, if they've taken any time off during their timeframe, go to the original slide. So let's look at a police department. They have a fourteen-hour work period. If one day during that fourteen-hour work period, they had to take off, and the chief is here and he can, he'd love to explain his staff, and I'd like the fire department to explain their staff, if that would be okay.
Uh, just, let me interrupt just a minute. Uh, I'd like to call on Mr. Vera Cruz, Mayor Pro- Uh, just, let me interrupt just a minute. Uh, I'd like to call on Mr. Vera Cruz, Mayor Protem, as a, uh, as a firefighter. You know, I think you may have some insight here for me.
So I think I'll let, let the chief, both chiefs explain and then I'll come behind and explain my situation because I'm, I fall exactly, well, opposite. What we're going for, what we're asking for is the, the particular circumstance I'm in.
And that's why I wanted to call on you now to provide some input.
Let's do this. So, uh, I work shift work, twenty-eight hour, I'm sorry, twenty-eight day work period. In my city, uh, we project our holidays and vacation days in October of the previous year. So I've already, I already know my vacation days and holidays for next year because you plan vacation, you know, uh, trips, whatever, uh, family units, whatnot. So you have no control over that, right? This particular year, we work Christmas and so on and so forth, right? So, I say all that to say this, that in that twenty-eight day cycle, I can have regular days off because they're pre-scheduled. I have no, uh, control over that. But if I call in sick, right, which sometimes, uh, not for me, uh, could be a family member, I do not get that halftime. So I get my, my full-time, my regular pay on that paycheck, but I do not get that halftime if I call in sick. But if I'm on vacation day, holiday, or what we call Kelly days for us, I get that halftime. So, but, but the bigger thing about this is that when we look at recruiting and retention, they look at that. You look at the benefits package, you look at everything, the way the city's set up. And if we can re, uh, engage this and give them their time back, it's gonna help the retention, right, or help them make a decision to stay. I hope that makes some sense.
It does, and I appreciate it. Um, Mr. Contreras, did you wanna comment or did you wanna hear what our chiefs have to say first?
Well, just a point of clarification for myself, if I could. Um, I've heard the term, uh, a couple of times, the extraordinary circumstances. How much of that time, uh, you gave us a projected cost? How much of that is the result of, of, um, ex, what you would consider to be extraordinary circumstances versus just routine demand for overtime hours? They're distinctly different, right?
It, when I manually calculated, it's all time, whether it was mandatory or not. It's all leave that was taken.
But we're talking about overtime. So you're, 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 you're subjected to working overtime for a number of different reasons that may happen. What would be some of those reasons?
Well, for police and fire, it could be, you know, some backfilling, you know.
Ms. Odi, why don't you let the chiefs explain that? It's their bailiwick.
So let me give you one that I think everyone will understand. Every year, uh, come around about early July, we have a big deal, Fourth of July. And we have a, a pretty good presence, both fire and police. Now, just to kind of break it down on an eighty-hour work week, um, and our patrol works twelve-hour shifts, I won't get into that, but we'll just cut it down forty and forty. If the one week that is not Fourth of July, I'm on vacation and now I've gotta come in and work my shift on the week that I'm working, that I'm not on vacation, and now I gotta hold over for the time that I've gotta put in so the citizens and everybody can enjoy a safe Fourth of July event, I don't get overtime for that, at least recently. Uh, when I started, uh, again, the policy was what we're trying to get it to now, to get a nugget of, of something to kinda keep to, to kinda get a foothold that some of these other cities may not have, that may not take a whole lot of money. Uh, and, and to keep our, uh, first responders around and, and our other employees as well. But that's a good example, uh, Christmas parades. We don't get a choice to work there. We have to, uh, you know, whether to work that or not. So if we're taking vacation on one end of the week or we have time off, whether it's family sick leave or whether it's sick leave, sick leave for ourselves, and then we have to work the other week, the way it is now, we don't, we don't get that other halftime. So maybe that helps to explain. I hope so.
It does, chief.
Yeah, uh, Councilman Vera Cruz explained it very well. It's, uh, twenty-eight day cycles that get us. And another thing that gets us is we have to have our staffing scheduled through a year. So you have no choice whatsoever as to when that comes off because you've already scheduled it so I can make sure that I get everybody scheduled off for vacation. I get everybody scheduled off for holidays. So if I go in there on that first fourteen days of that twenty-eight day cycle and I've taken that twenty-four-hour vacation, if in that second fourteen, uh, days, I get popped for mandatory overtime, I'm forced to stay here to make sure that we keep our staffing so we can man our fire apparatus and our ambulances. So you have no choice. It's just like me coming in and saying that they say, "Mayor, I'm sorry, but you've been here for twenty-four hours. You are not gonna get to go home today for another twenty-four hours to be with your family. And, oh, by the way, you're not gonna get the halftime because you were off that first fourteen days. So you're just here at regular time away from your family and you've been here for now forty-eight hours." Which, as everybody knows, you get exhausted because we run a lot. So, uh, to my guys, they want to be able to get paid that halftime uh, because of the fact of the amount of work that they're doing. The twenty-eight day cycle is the one that, that's getting us. So, uh, in all fairness, because of the fact they do have to schedule so far in advance, uh, it's not, uh, equitable for them not to be able to get that halftime when they are forced to stay here. Things are beginning to come clear.
Mayor, you wanna also tie in parks and public works because Fourth of July hits them too. Same scenario. They have a holiday in there. They work all night long, uh, for Fourth of July, but they're not paid overtime for the time that they're done because they had a holiday in there.
And what I was going to say is that what's becoming clear is the commitment to one year's worth of holiday and vacation time. And that's not, right, it's, it's, but it, you can't go back on that, I guess. I'm looking for a big word and there isn't one. I mean, once you commit to that holiday vacation time, it's on a yearly schedule, and if something happens, you get called in during that vacation holiday time that you're supposed to be gone, you should get time and a half.
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that. But you see, that, that wasn't in here.
Yeah.
And that's why it's important for, for me personally, maybe the rest, you know, somebody sitting around here, until Mr. Vera Cruz said they got this twenty-eight day cycle and you're committing to a year's worth of vacation time, the light's coming on. It didn't come on until I, until he said that, I'll be quite honest. Because it was hard for me coming from where I'm coming from saying, "Hey, you know, I, I committed to Christmas and yeah, I gotta work for Christmas." And everybody goes, "Yeah, well, fine and good, you know, you ain't getting paid. We'll go do this anyway." That's where I come from.
And that, and that happens to some, uh, firefighters, uh, come up the twenty-fourth. If I don't have the staffing,
Yeah.
one of those guys is gonna have to stay there the twenty-fifth, so there's their, the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth away from their family, no Christmas whatsoever.
So, when, city manager, if I understood what you said correctly, we used to have this policy, but we did away with it. And now we're trying to reinstitute it?
Actually, we tightened up our policy and cut out a, we cut out the opportunity, uh, it was a cost savings measure. So we removed the overtime. And Mr. Contreras may have some more details, who's been here longer than I have, when it actually happened, uh,
No, as a matter of fact, I don't, but I do have another question.
No, no, wait, 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 wait. I'm not done with you yet.
I'm not done either. So, the question.
So, no, wait, it, it, it may be simply, I just, I just wanted definitive and categorical. We used to have this policy, but at some point, for cost-saving measures, that policy was done away with or modified to where it does not, did, does, today it does not exist as it used to exist. Correct or not correct?
Uh, we currently have a policy, but the policy removed the overtime option if you took a day off.
And when did that happen? When was it removed?
Two thousand and eight.
During the recession.
During the recession, when the recession tanked on us, that's when the city manager at that point went in there and he removed all the halftime if you had, did not have those hours.
Thank you for that. Because what you were saying is, I'm taking it like we did, we, this was in effect until all of a sudden COVID hit. And so COVID hits and we made the change.
Yeah.
That's why I was trying to get to this point. Exactly when did this policy get changed? It was two thousand and eight during the recession.
Yes, sir.
Very enlightening. Mr. Contreras?
Uh, thank you. Um, okay, this kind of takes us back to my first question and thank you, Chief Levigny, for answering, uh, and Councilman, uh, Vera Cruz as well. Because it seems to me that, the, the overtime situation, and I'll speak because we've been speaking fire, but it's probably police too, that this is just a demand of the job, overtime. It's, it's a fact of life. It's not so much extraordinary circumstances, although that happens. We've seen that. This is the demand. So, it seems to me that once we establish that that's the baseline for what we're talking about, uh, it's unavoidable they're gonna have these overtime issues and we, we've not been able, and I'm gonna jump to another subject. We've not been, been able to complete our compensation, uh, analysis. Um, and it's gonna be a while before we can do that. So to me, the numbers that were seen projected for the cost of, uh, of this overtime, uh, I know that's just estimates. Um, I, I don't see why we have to have much more discussion, but I know we're not voting tonight, but it's, uh, it just seems like it's time to get it back.
Well, I have to have mandatory overtime. I have to because I'm low on staffing. My staffing is way below what it should be. And, um, if that's the case, if you want an ambulance to come to your house, you want two qualified paramedics to show up to your house. If you have a fire, you want two qualified fire apparatus with personnel on it to show up. And I have to have mandatory overtime to be able to do that. And, and all equitable, they need to have that halftime, um, you know, as a gratuitous for what the city feels like, "Hey, I'm glad y'all are available and you're coming to my house and you're serving the, the public like we, uh, we all expect."
Mr. Vera Cruz.
Yes, sir, uh, Mayor. I'm gonna speak to, um, the mandatory overtime. So for instance, and this is just round numbers, right? Say for instance, we, we have to have one hundred people working today to staff every seat on an apparatus, right? With that, if someone calls in sick, somebody's on family medical leave, somebody's injured, you got two people on family medical leave, now you're five short. If no one signs up for voluntary, then he's gonna call five people and say, "You're working tomorrow." Now, tomorrow could be Christmas Day, Christmas Eve, New Year's Day, a, a holiday, I'm not, excuse me, a holiday, uh, anniversary day, a birthday that you've planned for quite some time. You don't get that. You get to call your wife or a significant other and say, "Hey, I got mandatory tomorrow." And that's happening a lot, uh, because of staffing, uh, again, recruiting, retention, just, it, it's tough. And, uh, in my city, they're, they're doing as much as a hundred and sixty a day, making them work the next day. Because you have to have, excuse me, sir, you have to have that mandatory staffing. So, I mean, if, if, if our folks are gonna commit to this city and our residents, at least we could do is commit to, uh, you know, giving them this. And not just fire and police, but just our, all our city employees.
Yeah, the city manager was correct. You know, it's parks and it's streets, you know, storm landed. You know, everybody, it was all hands on deck. Just take care of the leaks going on around the city. I see that, understand it. I'm gonna, I see, Mr. Harvey, you have a comment. If you don't mind, I wanna just express a thought. If we, council members sitting here and having this, this discussion, and I don't know how many of you are as enlightened as I am now, thinking that, by golly, we ought to put this thing back in place. Technically speaking, we're in a briefing session. We can't vote on what we're seeing here. But if we wish to do so as a council, we can take an item and move it into the city council and one of the council members could possibly make a motion to approve something.
No, you can't.
We cannot.
No. And, this isn't really your issue. This is, you hired the city manager, she's gonna, she's telling you what she wants to do.
I'm looking for a consensus.
I didn't take it that way.
You can constrict the budget and you've budgeted the money for her to run the fire department and the parks department and the police department. And she has the right of passing of that budget to determine how she's gonna spend the money that you've budgeted. And as the chief executive officer of the city, she can implement this policy. Because the manager in two thousand and eight didn't ask the council, he told the council, "I'm gonna go over budget and if I don't do this, then we've got a deficit or, no, I'm gonna have to lay people off."
Hey, well, there's another piece of education because the presentation of this piece of information didn't, I did not take it as strictly information that the city manager was going to just talk about this and that we weren't gonna even think about it. I'm thinking about it.
Can I speak to that?
You know, and I see, and I see the need and I see the necessity, so if the city. I'm still thinking, but I'm gonna go to Mr. Harvey and then to Mr. Contreras. Come back to myself.
Uh, it is very clear to me that, uh, the firefighters and policemen makes sacrifices on our behalf, uh, for our protection and parks and others for quality of life in terms of the citywide celebrations that we have. And so, uh, I, I think it's eminently fair, uh, to compensate them, uh, to let them know that we support them. And so I am in favor. And I think I echo what, uh, Councilmember Contreras just said. I am in favor of the city manager bringing this back for an action item on the next upcoming meeting. Thank you.
Does it need to be an action item? Because the city manager, the city attorney said, "This is not an action item for the council. This is simply information from the city manager's staff to this council, they're getting a consent that what she intends to do is the resting for our people."
Well, she's got my support. Thank you.
And I will echo that. I believe that's what she's asking for is a consensus right now. Thank you.
And if that's what you're asking for, I think you've got approval to go ahead and do what you think is right.
And I wanted the staff, and I wanted you, these are things that, there are a lot of administrative policies and we'll keep briefing council on it that are done at the city manager's level. But I also wanna make sure that council's aware and I want the staff to know that council's aware and they're concerned about you and that they wanna make sure that I'm making the necessarily, necessary policy changes to ensure that you're compensated. So that's why we wanted them to know. Because many council members had no idea that this policy changed because it was done at the city manager's level. So even if it doesn't require council action, I wanna make sure the council's engaged. So, thank you, council.
Mayor, if I may say one other thing, this is not just a fire department issue or a police department issue, because if we have some type of event in, in Duncanville, whether it's, uh, a huge windstorm like we could possibly get in a few days or a huge ice storm, my fire department is gonna need the police department. I'm gonna need public works to clear the streets so I can get my fire apparatus through. I'm gonna need park people to help with all of our other stuff that we're gonna be doing. So this is a citywide department, um, issue that we, we were dealing with here. It's not just the fire department, it's not just the police department. I, I've got to have these other departments to be successful.
That was clearly understood by me, chief.
Yeah.
You know, because it, it's still, I use the term extraordinary, but it is extraordinary. Because if you're on leave and you're supposed to take that leave and you're called in for whatever reason, that's an extraordinary circumstance. I don't care what it's for. It's something that you didn't plan for and anything unplanned for is extraordinary circumstance. So one thing I would ask, this from the ci- from the city manager, is that.
That was planned, man.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
I, city manager, I would ask that maybe in our packet, there would be just a little more verbiage to explain what we're doing here. Because if, if that were explained just a li- in a little more detail, that what you're doing is coming to the council to educate us on something and to what your intention is, is to reinstate something that had been done away with fourteen years ago, for this guy, it would have been a whole lot easier to understand.
Absolutely. And, and because I, I just wanted you all to know, and we'll come back and bring some more. There are other, this is, just for everyone to know, this is a kickoff of, of looking at all things employees. And so this is just one of many things that where if, even if it doesn't require a vote of council, we wanna make sure that council's engaged in the conversation, so.
And that is greatly appreciated. Greatly appreciated. Okay. Chief Levigny, Chief Roddy, any closing comments? Y'all better be smiling and looking to our. And look into our fire, that, you know, and our law enforcement are here. Words don't express well how much we appreciate our first responders and our parks and our streets and everything else that goes on in terms of keeping the city running. Mr. Veracruz.
Now, now, this is uh, this is just a firefighter in me, right? So is there any way to get any back pay if there's any budget? You gotta ask, right?
This will be effective January first.
Wrong city, yeah. No, uh, thi- this is the right thing to do. And city manager, I appreciate you bringing it to us. And I think it's uh, it's almost heartbreaking to to hear that. I'll just group first responders into parks and streets and fire and police and even staff. I mean, during storm landing, people were sleeping in this building, because that's what they needed to do. And if they weren't being paid properly and overtime for that, that's heartbreaking for me as a servant of our city. So this is the right thing to do, and and I just want everybody to know, me personally, th- this this is right. This is good, okay. Item C, where are we? We're still in the briefing session, Emerging Leaders Presentation on City Beautification.
I'll start out. Mayor and council, uh, we started under the previous city manager and Emerging Leaders Program. And part of the program is they put together presentations, and the presentations are re- are things that we can do within our city. One of the challenges we find is that many of you never get a chance to see some of the ideas that come forward. I had the opportunity this week during the graduation program uh, from the class to see a presentation that I thought was something the council would be very interested in. Now, let me give you an example of this. I am asking for consensus, and the consensus is, would you like once seeing this presentation for me to bring this back to council for action and possible appropriation of funds to move forward? But I will turn it over to them uh, for their presentation first, uh, to take you through this.
And thank you for that preamble.
Yes.
Mr. Tennant.
Mayor, city council, I wanted to basically make sure that I acknowledge a part of my team. There was a lot more of us, but unfortunately, we weren't, everybody wasn't able to make it this evening. But we have Mr. Danny Johnson, who works in parks, the Parks Department. And we also have Mr. Clay Manziel, who works in economic development. And we also have another person who's hiding right now, Assi- Assistant Police Chief Chris Freeze as well. These are just some of the members that are here this evening, but we also want to make sure that we acknowledge Mr. LeShan Devan, uh, who is with the um. Public Works, and also Jonathan Delain, who is also with Parks, uh, the Parks, um, Parks Board, Parks, uh, Parks Board, I'm thinking about the other presentation. The Parks Department as well. Alright, one of the goals of um, our our project was, of course, uh, to establish a program that would inspire, uh, engage the stakeholders in the community to actively participate. Uh, in what's in the ongoing beautification efforts and also uh, expand the curb appeal, uh, that will enhance the visual appeal and brand of the perception of the city of Duncanville. That was what we ta- tasked as a goal for ourselves and presented to our city manager and also our executive team.
Uh, some of the current efforts that we have currently, uh, is we have two separate litter crews, one, I'm sorry.
We need you on the microphone for recording.
I apologize, sir.
There you go.
Okay, so currently, we have two litter crews. One of those litter crews is both two-man crews. One of those crews takes care of streets only. The other crew takes care of parks only. Uh, and so um, we have a three-person horticultural crew that assists in the beautification efforts as well. We we currently have a landscape maintenance contract with Brightview Services who assist us with curb appeal as well. Uh, keep Duncanville beautiful board, uh, assist us with identifying issues and areas that need improvement.
One of the aspects that came out, oh, excuse me. One of the aspects that came out as we were putting together our plan for a project, City Beautification, was something that came from our Neighbor Vitality Commission, um, meeting one time. Uh, Mr. Tim Perry, he was one of our members at one time. One of the things that he brought before us was a survey, a citizen's survey, because he being a citizen, he went out and looked at eleven plazas throughout the city. Some of the, some of the um, pictures that he shared with us are before you right now. You've got this residential area near the Dollar Store Plaza, and you also have an area over here by the Hay Beauty Supply Plaza. So one of the concepts that we talked about as a team was, how do we uh, remedy this? We've got some suggestions at the end that we presented to our um, city manager and economic development, development team. But we also wanted to like put forth some um, aspects of like, hey, what can we do now? And one of those aspects would I'll discuss, and then the second one is what Mr. Johnson will discuss, will present to you shortly. Going farther into Mr. Perry's um, survey, the eleven plazas that we have, we just want to get a gist of what exactly we're dealing with on the ground. We, he identified a hundred and eighty-four businesses and eleven plazas that we have throughout the uh, city. Forty of those currently have trash cans. Thirty-nine of those have dumpsters. So again, this is something that el- that kind of illustrates part of the reason why we have a trash issue within the city. And one of the things that we identified from the trash issues is, of course, our MS four. Uh, when, we have trash going into our sewer, our stormwater sewage area, so that's one of the things that we wanted to correct as well as we were putting this together in this thought process. Uh, again, going to the retail plazas, you've got commercial retail uses that are, we've identified as a point source, one of the main point sources for trash within the city. Again, giving a shout out to Mr. Perry, who we appreciate for providing this survey to us to set as a quote-unquote foundation as we proceeded forth with our plan for this upcoming, for our Emerging Leaders Project. Uh, it also prov- um, provide additional dis- disposal options for patrons, i.e. those trashcans, which I'll get to a little bit later, so please bear with me as we get to that slide. And also, we can establish a policy and accountability for businesses to have the dumpsters or revetments and closures on their properties. So these are just some ideas that we came up with, as long as as postfeedback surveys to identify ideas and actions from the citizens as well, so we can get that community input. So that way, it's not just a staff and city approach, we're actually providing the community to be a part of the the solution, so that we're all working on the branding aspect of it as well. Alright, speaking of that, one of the things that we, a couple of things that we were looking at doing or proposing as well, was establish relationships with neighborhood associations. Uh, identify plans for the neighborhoods, uh, educate, create an education and engagement program, i.e. including them in the process, not just saying this is what we wanna do, but having them be a part of that said solution. Also, identify Duncanville partners that have the expertise and resources, i.e. sponsorships for those trashcans. As we saw, there's a dearth of trashcans in our retail areas. One of the things that we were thinking is with the help of our friends in economic development. Okay, he's being coy right now. Our friends in economic development, we can utilize that as an aspect, uh, where we can actually help with some type of uh, branding, so that way we can actually get the sponsorships of the trashcan, on the trashcans. It's not just your sign on your window, but if you're actually part of the keeping Duncanville beautiful, keeping your retail plaza beautiful, you can actually utilize that as a quote-unquote branding of like, hey, we're taking care of this trashcan, we're dumping that trashcan, we're doing our part. It may be minor, but we're doing our part. The other aspect is education and monitoring for trash pickup, which of course, I just mentioned at that juncture. Oh, and the other aspect, emotional ownership through the leave it bu- better than you found it, which ties into that element as well.
Okay, so one of the things that we recommended to city manager and executive team was to add this piece of equipment. This is a piece of equipment that um, we've noticed cities like Mesquite, Plano, uh, and the city of Dallas using to assist them in becoming more efficient in litter control. This piece of equipment will ride down sidewalks, uh, it will go out into parks. Uh, the only thing it won't do is go through inclines, okay? But it will pick up just about anything uh, at any size except for a bottle. Tires or uh, big pieces of cardboard, okay? Uh, so it will collect a hundred gallons of waste debris before it has to be emptied, okay? This is the piece of equipment, they have various different models. Uh, this is an electric one. We would suggest uh, uh, ask city manager or council to allow us to purchase a diesel piece of equipment. Currently, the lead time on these, uh, when we did this project, we got a quote in October, lead time was three months. We contacted them after we had the uh, presentation to the city manager executive team, and now the lead time is six months. I was also informed that there will possibly be a price increase after the first year. Will certainly allow us to become more efficient in litter control.
And one of the things we're trying to do was actually illustrate how the machine actually works with the video, but you can per- conceive, this is a a actual electric one, but they come in electric and gas. Uh, so just to kinda give you that kind of, oh, excuse me. Uh, one of the things we're trying to do is actually uh, show you how it works, but if you can per- perceive uh, this being a machine that, the ones that you're, we're looking at are gas operated. And also, uh, it could basically pick up, um, as um, Mr. Johnson said, everything with that vacuum as it's, as it sucks up, everything except for glass bottles. Alright, so some of the challenges that we identified, some of the challenges that we identified is budget financial. Uh, A, trying to identify when and how it could actually come on a budget to the upcoming budget, upcoming budget cycle. Uh, this being twenty twenty-three, uh, moving into twenty twenty-four potentially. Uh, stakeholder engagement and ownership, uh, based upon what we identified with the trashcan, trying to identify those particular stakeholders to actually be, again, part of the solution through the branding effort. Uh, inertia and past habits, unfortunately, trash is one of those things where people have a tendency of, I'm used to just throwing it at my window, or out of my car, or out of the, out of the business as I leave. Uh, we need to get kind of change and steer those habits to, i.e. utilize canisters and utilize um, dumpsters, so that way we can, in essence, be part of that solution to keep Duncanville beautiful. And also time and effort internally, where we work as, internally as staff, to ensure that we are doing, putting the effort behind it to make sure that this actually can potentially become into fruition. Alright, next steps that we've identified is identification of the stakeholders, surveying stakeholders both internally and externally for buy-in and new ideas. Because again, this was just a group of very engaged sta- staff members, uh, that are looking to become future leaders in the city of Duncanville. But we wanna make sure that we pass this out to everybody, so that way we can bring, put more of this, um, that we may be missing, i.e. henceforth we're bringing in front of the body, um, such as this. Uh, city manager and executive team buy-in as we presented to them, uh, and they have provided us some good um, advice as well. Uh, communicate with boards and commissions for inputs and ideas as well. And um, as I mentioned before, recommended for the twenty twenty-three planning to present as a budget item for twenty twenty-four. At this juncture, we'd like to ask you if you have any questions for us.
Mr. Harvey.
Thank you so much, gentlemen, for your presentation, we appreciate it. I was just thinking to myself that this equipment apparently um. Improves uh, both sanitation and stormwater. Uh, so perhaps between those two funds, uh, there can be enough money put together uh, to acquire this equipment. Uh, and who knows, uh, if we ask Republic, the worst they could say is no, they may want to kick in something as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Very interesting piece of equipment and a great deal to consider, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, what I'd like to do is bring this back at our first meeting. Uh, I do think we can identify funding sources for it. Uh, one of the things that I found most exciting about it is, we know that we only have so many staff members. And this would actually improve upon what we have, and as we get people trained, we'll able to be able to do more with less. We wanna be able to eliminate a person, but you'll have more trash along those areas that people have identified, picked up in a lot faster.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Contreras.
Just a a quick response to the city manager's comment. Th- this piece of equipment would only be used on city-owned property or public right-of-way, is correct?
So we did have that conversation, and one of the conversations in there is that there are those who are uh, frequent flyers that we have problems with. And we could also offer that service as we have the equipment to them to create kind of an enterprise fund. A lot of cities are creating internal businesses, and so in some of those areas, we would have that opportunity to utilize it to clean up in those areas. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, moving on to item two D. City council calendar, city secretary.
Good evening, mayor and council, I'm Janie Willman, city secretary. So, uh, the city manager had asked us to prepare a calendar, looking at the length of the whole year. And our limitations on our time to be able to get it posted to the agenda forced us to crunch that up. So we're gonna bring you an updated calendar. She asked us to provide all of the, all of the information related to the election, we're gonna do that as well. We'll bring you an updated calendar in full with that, as well as including the National League of Cities, the um, the dates for TML. Now, now there's a, an interim TML conference, if you're interested in that as well. And that way you can do your planning, because I don't, I feel like I'm preaching to the choir, because you know how busy your schedules are, especially considering now the considerations related to the lab property. And uh, putting in there budgeting, a budgeting cycle as well, we wanted you to have an opportunity to plan your year at length. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So we can be confident that no extraordinary circumstances will occur.
We will hope not, but uh, what we do want from council as you look at this, I'm sorry, it's not up here, is that if you have any dates that you know of, that we need to get to the city secretary. So that as we're getting to our budget cycle and we're getting into uh, the budget process, which is a very long process in our city, we start in February. Uh, that we can make sure we make plans around those dates as well, and so that for our special meetings and even our council retreat, that we can start to select those days. But if you know of any council member, if you have any particular dates that you would like us to make sure that we avoid, we would like those sent to the city secretary. So when we come back with this full calendar in January, we can have what you have thus far included in this calendar.
So just for clarification, just, okay, for me personally, so I know that I have a monthly meeting with the Dallas Regional Mobility Coalition. I have a monthly meeting with the Regional Transportation Council for the COG. I have a monthly meeting with the Best Southwest Partnership. And I have monthly meetings with the COG for unmanned aircraft services. So do you want those kind of inputs where each of us individually are involved as well, not just where four, or five, or six of us might be involved? How deep do you wanna, wanna go?
Anything that you can give us that helps us so that we can ensure that as we start planning dates for, for example, boards and commission interviews and special meetings, that we'll know dates to avoid. And and so that detail, we've done the same thing with my team, is we have a calendar. It and it it may not on the city calendar have all of your dates listed, but at least we know to avoid those dates. If we know that a Wednesday's a bad day for most council members, then we make sure that we look at meetings on other dates. And so it'll help us when we're starting to poll council for special meetings and things like that.
Okay, good, so the answer is yes, you want all that stuff.
As much as you can give us.
Alright, very good, thank you, we appreciate that. Any comments, council on this? Alright, interestingly, that will conclude our briefing session, the timestamp on that is nine ten P M. And subsequent to that, then we will reconvene the city council meeting. And we'll just call that at nine ten as well, until that clock changes some other time. We're going to reconvene the city council meeting, and as a result of reconvening the city council meeting. My eyes are getting tired here. Alright, reconvening the city council meeting, we then move to item one B, council members' reports. Any council members' reports? Seeing none, moving on to item one C, city manager's report.
Sir, I don't have a report, I just wanna inform council on this Thursday, we will be closing city hall uh, early at noon. Uh, we're doing so for one is, we're doing the city manager's award, but also because we have some severe weather coming in, and we wanna ensure that our employees have the ability to get home to their families safely.
Very well, thank you, thanks for the foresight, and hopefully our city stays, stays safe during this incoming weather. Okay, just so you notice, on item number two, proclamation and presentations, it did say none. However, the agenda was prepared prior to the victory of Saturday night, so that's why no amended agenda was put forth, and that's why I took the opportunity to honor Coach Samples and his players during my mayor's report. And I hope citizens understand, and councils understand my doing so. Moving on to item number three, citizens' input, pursuant to section five fifty-one point zero zero seven of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the- any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning any matter of public business or any post-agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating. Any issues not on the public agenda and such non-agenda issues may refer to city staff for research and future action. All persons addressing or subject to council adopt rules and limitations, and the city council rules and limitations is that we have a two-minute time limit for comments from our citizens. Oh, okay. One individual did submit a comment, has departed. I think she made a mention to that to our city manager. Uh, so I do have a city, citizen comment card here from Lindsay Rogers. Is Lindsay Rogers still here? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Lindsay Rogers, nine oh seven Green Rock Drive, Duncanville, Texas. I'm with D Squared Catering. I'm the applicant for, um, the grease trap. And I just want to say thank you for the consideration and all of the help from the board and the continued support from Duncanville. We truly appreciate it.
Okay, just a second. Just a moment, just a moment, just a moment. You are the applicant for item D on our agenda.
Yes.
And that is an item for individual consideration. Okay. Seeing as how the applicant puts a different perspective on your comment. And because of you being the applicant, um, I heard what you happened to say. I'm going to give you an opportunity when we address this particular item, if you want to say anything more.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Because it's something we need to do because of this particular item coming under resolution. All right? So if you hang with us for a little more while longer, we'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, item is number five A for individual consideration. Uh, we do not have any. Oh, all right. Got to get back to order here. Thank you, city manager. We are going back to, my goodness, where are they? The consent agenda. And the consent agenda was previously read by the city manager, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items. Motion to approve by Mr. Harvey, second by Mr. Contreras. Counsel, please vote. This is approving consent agenda items. Unanimous approval. Thank you. Okay. Uh, just a second. We did not have executive session. So there's no action to be taken as a result of executive session, and that came before the work session, briefing session. Okay? So as I see it, we are now moving on to item five. What? Right. Okay. But this is a zero. That's what I'm saying. Right, okay. So item five A, we have no action on that one. We are not appointing any individuals to boards or commissions tonight. Moving on to item five B. Consider resolution authorizing the approval of chapter three eighty incentive grant in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars by the City of Duncanville, the Scooters Texas Real Estate Fund, LLC, and his duly authorized representative for costs associated with the expansion of Scooters Coffee franchise located at seven hundred West Camp Wism Road, Duncanville, seven five one one six. Mr. Mansell.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. So the Scooters saga, if you will, is concluding with this chapter tonight. But hopefully we're beginning a brand-new one when they open their franchise. Uh, you might remember in a previous meeting in October, they were approved for an SCP for their drive-through. We are sort of at the final stage of the, uh, city's involvement in the development now with the right-of-way abandonment. Um, you may remember back in twenty nineteen, the city actually approved to abandon the right-of-way, um, that adjoins the property to the south. Because of the pandemic, the project was delayed. Um, they re-engaged staff around February of twenty twenty-two this year, successfully culminating in the SCP for the drive-through, and now it is time for the city to be paid for the right-of-way. By statute, the city has to be paid for the right-of-way. And so the way that we can incentivize the project and in negotiations with the applicant, they had explored, um, potential incentive assistance, um, to make the project successful. And so part of that negotiation with them was, what do you need, right? And a part of that negotiation was, well, if they could just get the fee associated with the right-of-way rebated or abated, that would satisfy them to be able to make the franchise successful. And so, uh, the cost of that is, uh, thirty-four thousand, uh, two hundred and forty-eight dollars um, per a evaluation that was done when the right-of-way was abandoned in twenty nineteen. And so with three eighty, uh, the city does not have three eighty funds readily available. And so, uh, we need to be paid for the right-of-way. We need to be paid for the right-of-way, no matter what, by statute. But then this grant that is before you tonight for consideration would be given to them in an development agreement, three eighty, under chapter three eighty of the local government code, um, to help them, uh, beautify the property, make sure that, uh, again, part of that conversation we've had with them, we would like to see some landscaping. We would like, you know, nice signage, you know, facade, all that kind of stuff. So, uh, this amount of money could go a long ways towards helping them be successful in that. Um, and then just for reference, that's the right-of-way abandonment, uh, adjoining the property to the south. And so, um, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions by council? Oh, Mr. Coons.
Thank you. Could you go to the previous slide, please? So the last point there talks about the, um, you know, paving, landscaping, signage, facade, other enhancements. So my, my understanding of a, chapter three eighty is that, so this is an agreement between us and the, uh, Scooters, in this case. And, uh, typically their obligations on us for, I guess, the thirty-four thousand. Um, and that typically in chapter three eighty agreements, if there is some specific obligations by the developer. So, you know, these are things, I know they, you know, came to us a couple of months ago, and these are things that I saw that they were going to do. Is there any more specifics on exactly what their obligations are, because I know sometimes?
Um, in the development agreement, um, they have to open the franchise. They have to get a certificate of occupancy and begin operations. And so they have to, so if we're going to give them this grant to open their business, which we helped them open that by giving them the money back essentially for the right-of-way abandonment, they have to then actually say what they're going to do, open the Scooters franchise. So this grant is conditional on them successfully opening and conducting business in the city of Duncanville and creating the jobs associated with it and the property tax and the sales tax that go along with that.
So, so their obligation is just to open?
Yes, sir, and begin conducting operations.
Their, their obligations are to open, but they have to comply with all the requirements of the zoning. And so we'll write the agreement, they have to put the paving in, that's what the landscaping in, that's what signage in, and the facade that they promised. And if they don't, then they ain't going to get the grant, or they have to pay it back. That's the obligation.
And, and that's in the, the resolution that we have?
It's not in the resolution, it's in the agreement. I wrote that in the agreement. He, he's told you what the obligations are in fact, and then they have to get a C.O. That's, that's what Clay's talking about, so I do all the things required. He did the C.O. Like all, all of our grantees have those same obligations.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, my mic went, uh.
Chair Lintain motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. Harvey, second by, uh, Mr. Cherry. Counsel, please vote. Uh, the vote is five to one. Mr. Coons dissenting. Item five C, consider a resolution approving an incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation to Fiesta Furniture Outlet LLC, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for qualified expenditures for a building located at six forty-two East Highway sixty-seven, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one three seven. Mr. Mansell.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, to provide some background on this item, the applicant's landlord approached us a few months back. Previously, the landlord had operated the A-one furniture, um, at the same location on, uh, Highway sixty-seven. With the A-one furniture, uh, closing and the new Fiesta Furniture store that will be going in the spot, by the new business going in there, even though the type hasn't changed, the new business has facilitated a new certificate occupancy. Uh, with the certificate occupancy comes the requirements that although A-one furniture might have had grandfathered in when those codes got updated in twenty fifteen, international building code, fire code, et cetera. Obviously, the new business must conform with those codes. And so it being a furniture store with a lot of fabrics and carpeting and things like that, they must have a sprinkler system. And so, uh, with that, um, and we might have, you know, we've talked about this in, you know, sessions previously and things like that about our policy. Sprinkler systems are very expensive. Uh, even the, the cheapest ones are, are, are very, you know, in the, uh, a hundred thousand range plus. And so, um, a part of that is, it's, it's multifaceted. One, we want to keep the property owner here, because from that, right, we get the tenants. And we obviously want to attract the tenant. So we're not necessarily retaining A-one, but we are retaining a business while also attracting one, if that kind of makes sense. And so, uh, we're keeping a property owner that is, uh, working with us to improve their facility. And then we're attracting the business as well, that has a couple of different locations throughout the metroplex. The request tonight is, uh, the EDC board approved eighty thousand dollars for the installation of a fire line. So from the water main to the building. The EDC, and I just want to clarify, this did not approve funds for the fire alarm or the sprinkler system internally, um, in compliance with statute, in regards to what EDC dollars can be used for. And so, um, that is what is being requested here tonight. The landlord currently is, um, the exact term, abating rent, if you will, uh, for this tenant. So they are, uh, not charging them rent in order to incentivize them to, uh, make the tenant finish outs to build the, uh, fire sprinkler system. And then just to kind of conclude this item, and then I'll take questions. Um, this is absolutely in line with, uh, EDC objectives and priorities. We're not touching the building internally. There's another conversation to be had in regards to, uh, Opportunity Area Two, which this does fall within, um, in some of our other missions. But just looking at it pragmatically, um, whether this business stays here, or if a new business comes in, or if we do a major overhaul to the, uh, the property, the fire line will remain. So no matter what happens, a year from now, two years, five years from now, the investment that we make in the property here today will stay with the property. And in fact, I don't see a future where any business is not going to need to be sprinkled, uh, at some point. Uh, that's just sort of the trend we're going with, you know, fire suppression, uh, systems with, uh, with new finish-out, new buildings. Um, and then just to conclude, um, from our comprehensive plan, uh, for opportunity, opportunity area two, it does say, and I quote, "As a strategy, identify non-conforming properties," which is now in non-conformance with our building and fire codes, "and work with the property owners to bring the property into compliance," which is what we are asking for tonight with this grant. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And then if you would like to refer to the bids, we have those as well on the screen.
Sorry, Mr. Contreras.
Thank you, mayor. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this request and the, um, the, uh, EDC's, uh, final decision, but, um, what, what's troubling to me is that with this policy that's causing, um, the need for a sprinkler system, and I sure appreciate that. Unless we know how many buildings we have in the city that would be subject to this when they sell or they're reoccupied.
It's going to be, uh, quite a number with, uh, with the age of a lot of the buildings we have throughout the city. It's going to be, it's going to be a, a.
Yeah, and we're not going to have enough money to help all of them, or most of them. So it's something I want to look at in the future outside of this discussion, is that there's going to be some people that are going to lose out on this. And whether it's a building owner that's just not going to be able to occupy the building again. He has a piece of property, but he can't afford the sprinkler system, and we've run out of funds. It's a, it, it could be a serious situation. So all I would say is I'd like to, at some point, get a list of all the buildings in the city that we know of that could be impacted by the policy, so that we can have a discussion about how we're going to help those folks and not end up with a bunch of empty buildings. But I do support this, uh, this request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
City manager had a comment, please?
Yes, this has been a discussion we've been having with, uh, as we've been trying to meet with our building owners all over the city, and it's a fire code. And we realize that there are some alternatives that are available. And so one of the things I've tasked, not only to track those buildings, but to work, uh, departmentally, uh, with our other departments to look at what are the other options available. But we are not a new city. We're a city with buildings that are in some cases dated, and we want these buildings occupied. And so, uh, this was one approach, but we are going to have to work closely together to look at other approaches, because you are correct. Uh, we have many buildings that as soon as they change owner, they fall into the new fire code. And with that in mind, we could lose tenants, and that's revenue for the city. And so, uh, we will bring something back to you, uh, probably the first meeting in February, as I look down at Gus, uh, on just a list of them. But also, I know we have a, our fire marshal who is retiring and has some new individuals coming in to look at what are other cities doing who have, uh, aged properties that were not up to the standards that are required today.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? Chair Lintain motion to approve. Motion to approve by Mr. Harvey, second by Mr. Contreras. Counsel, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Item five D, consider a resolution approving an incentive grant by the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Corporation to D Squared Catering LLC, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, seven, seventeen cents for qualified expenditures for a building located at five one nine East Highway sixty-seven, Duncanville, Texas. Mr. Mansell.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, D Squared Catering and, um, not to state the obvious, but the applicant is here tonight, um, as well, if, uh, you have any additional questions. Uh, D Squared is a local Duncanville business that many of us are familiar with. Uh, they reached out to us, uh, quite a while back, actually. Um, this actually predates, um, our investment in the redevelopment of Wheatland Plaza. Previously, they were a tenant there. And, uh, you may remember in some of our early meetings about Wheatland Plaza, that we were hearing from a lot of the tenants there that the previous ownership, uh, wasn't investing in them, uh, wasn't investing in the buildings. And we were actually at risk of losing a couple of number of the businesses, including D Squared. They were actually potentially looking at relocating outside of the city, uh, because of, um, some of the issues they were running into. Fortunately, we were able to work with them, and we found them a new location along, uh, Highway sixty-seven, uh, the old Bow Wow, uh, building. So we were successful in the retention of the business, and the next step of that is helping them, uh, potentially with the item tonight, to make the bill, uh, the building suitable for their business. As they are a catering business, they, uh, have the same requirements as restaurants and, and the such. And so since they prep the food, they need a grease trap. Um, the building previously does not have a grease trap. And so in order for them to successfully occupy the building, that is what is required. And so, um, they did supply their three bids, um, but again, in our negotiation with the applicant, uh, regarding, because here are the bid amounts for you tonight, sixty-eight thousand, forty-two, forty-nine. And some of the conversations had some applicants who are able to work through that process. Well, what do you need? You know, what do you need to be successful? And the amount came out to be twenty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-four, uh, dollars and seventeen cents. That's what they need for the grease trap, because, uh, some of the bids, um, include a lot of different things. You might notice here at the bottom, for example, uh, this is from, uh, one of the, uh, contractors. The grease trap itself is just the twenty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then there's some other things that are not necessarily, uh, qualified expenditures. For example, we can incentivize the range hood. Plumbing kind of becomes nebulous, because although we can help with the exterior finish-out, bringing the grease. the exterior finish out, bringing the grease trap, which protects public infrastructure from the fats, from the food that, you know, catches it before it enters our stormwater system, those are qualified expenditures. But of course, internal plumbing for things like sinks and toilets and things like that are not qualified expenditures. And so, that was one of the things we worked with the applicant. What do you actually need for the qualified expenditures? And that is the amount that is before you tonight. And if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them. And just one final note, we are also working with the applicant to beautify the building. It is now, and you'll see this in the quarterly report, I don't have it in this presentation, they have repainted the building. Unfortunately, they repainted it prior to submitting the application. And so, we are not able to assist them on that item as it's already been completed. But looking at additional landscaping, signage, those are things that hopefully we'll also bring before you at a later time. We're working with the applicant to do those as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mansell. Ms. Rogers, the applicant. I can, since this is not a public hearing, I cannot allow you more than two minutes to speak. But if you would like to embellish or give us a little more elaboration on what's happening here in two minutes or less, you're more than welcome to.
I just want to say thank you again. We are very excited to be moving into a much bigger space. We've been in Duncanville for the last ten years. Eight years of that was spent in Wheatland Plaza. And we've done a lot of work to this building, getting ready and preparing to move. It looks quite a bit different than it did whenever we first looked at it six months ago. You guys have supported us. We've fed many of you. We enjoy feeding you, and we appreciate all of the support that you've given us. And we are glad to be able to stay here in Duncanville. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from City Council?
Mayor, I move for approve.
Have most, was the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Harvey, did you have a comment prior to us taking any action on this?
No, 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 no. I agree with Councilmember Contreras. I'll just second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Contreras and a second by Mr. Harvey. Council, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. Moving on to item number five E. Consider a motion to authorize expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act, unknown as ARPA, Emergency Business Assistance Program grants for qualified Duncanville small businesses in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Mr. Mansell and your partner.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we enter in this item, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Jeremiah Brewer to give the presentation. We'll, of course, be here to assist him if there are any hard-hitting questions. But I do want to know that Mr. Brewer, who is our interim executive assistant, recently completed his Master's of Public Affairs at the University of Texas at Dallas. Yesterday, he graduated. He is on the path towards city management. And so, as you know, to be a city manager, you must be comfortable working with a council. And so, a part of that is presenting before one. So, sort of as a rite of passage, if you will, we would like to allow him, and he did put this presentation together, and he's been immensely helpful in processing the applications that are coming before you tonight for a motion of approval. So, he has been indispensably helpful on this item. And so, I thought it was only right that he would be able to present it. So, I'll turn it over to him now.
Congratulations, Mr. Brewer, on your graduation and also for the perseverance to be that, and for being with us in our city. Mr. Harvey, did you have a comment before he proceeds?
Sure. I just want you to know that in my experience in municipal affairs, I've worked with councils for a number of years. And so, for your inaugural voyage, I don't believe you could find a better council than this one to start out with. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Brewer, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity. Just a background of the item.
Just point it straight at yourself, and you'll probably be okay. Yeah, be comfortable.
During the COVID-19 pandemic, small businesses faced significant financial crisis due to the nature of the pandemic. With lockdowns and COVID-19 mitigation requirements, businesses often had to significantly scale back operations or shut down entirely. Programs designed to assist small businesses, such as Paycheck, the Paycheck Protection Program through the CARES Act, tried to amend some of these issues, but roughly fifty percent of small businesses were really only able to apply for assistance for this program, and eighty percent still have not received confirmation of approval. Fifty-three percent of U.S. jobs come from small businesses with fewer than a hundred employees and are typically operated by low to moderate income individuals and families with already limited resources. This program was intended to cut through the red tape and get assistance into the hands of small business owners without the bureaucratic requirements that have disincentivized so many businesses. The eligibility criteria for the American Rescue Plan Act funds, emergency business assistant funds would be, are, the businesses must be officially registered with the state, physically and be physically located and operating within Duncanville city boundaries, be current in payment of all tax obligations to the city, have begun or began conducting business as of or during 2020, have no more than one hundred employees, generate at least thirty-five thousand dollars in revenue annually, and have closed or suffered revenue loss during the pandemic due to COVID-19. The maximum grant amount that applicants can hope to receive tonight, or hope to receive would be fifteen thousand dollars. On the latter part of this slide, it details the specific, how the specific funds are doled out in description. For example, the, it's two thousand five hundred dollars per full-time employee, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per part-time employee, one hundred percent of up to twelve months lease payments, utilities, renting, or purchase of business equipment existing in 2020 to the present, payment of existing business-related loans for equipment, vehicles, reimbursement for expenses to mitigate COVID-19 in the workplace, and five thousand dollars for restart capital for businesses that were forced out of business due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Also, just as a note, Council, this, even if this were approved tonight, staff would have to collect portion, the complete portions of their ARPA application packet, which would include a copy of their C.O., a completed vendor packet, a copy of their lease agreement, and payroll information to verify employee count. Round one of the ARPA application portal was opened in March eighth of 2022, and it concluded in June second. We received so many businesses wanting to apply for the program that we had to open a second round, and that was opened the thirtieth of June and then concluded November twenty-first. For this round two, thirteen businesses were verified to be qualified, were verified to be qualified, Duncanville small businesses totaling one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And two, two of the applicants that applied were disqualified and, because they were not found to be businesses that were located within the city of Duncanville or were registered with the state as having their office located in the city. In total, the round, the total businesses that we've, that have applied and been qualified to be awarded the grant funding for both round one and round two would be, if approved tonight, would be a total of fifty-four. And with an average, fifty-four businesses with an average business receiving eleven thousand five hundred dollars in a qualified approval. So, I think that would be a really significant boost to our, or keeping businesses afloat in Duncanville. The total amount would have been, it was like four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for round one. That was total of businesses that were awarded that amount. And then, in round two, if approved tonight, it would be one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand. So, that total was six-hundred-thousand twenty-one, six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand and, yeah, six-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars. And then, these next slides show the businesses that have been awarded, or this shows their qualified amount that would need approval tonight. Since the, also a note for Councils, since the monies have already been approved or they've been received from the federal government, there would be no, it wouldn't require a resolution. It would only need a motion that would authorize staff to move forward with the dispersment and award of the ARPA.
Okay.
The ARPA, the ARPA Emergency Business Funds.
Mr. Brewer, you mentioned that because of so many applicants, we had to open up for a second round, but only thirteen were approved. How many did we actually receive during that second round?
During the second round, we received fifteen, because it was thirteen that were approved and the two that weren't. So, we received fifteen.
So, if we put round one and round two together, how many applications did we receive?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four, and approved only thirteen out of the fifty-four.
Oh, excuse me. Round one and round two, the total is fifty-four. Round two of the fifteen that we received, thirteen were approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, from round one, in terms of the actual application amounts that we received, the, I want to say about fifty-eight applications. Of that, only forty-one were qualified.
And that's a four-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand and change.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And then, this round, we had fifteen, but two were disqualified.
Got it. Okay. Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Brewer?
Yeah, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from Council? Chair Lintana motion to approve? Approval, motion to approve by Mr. Harvey, second by Mr. Contreras. Is that right? Was it? Okay, yeah. Council, please vote. Unanimously approved. Thank you. And thank you for your first voyage. Well done, sir. Thank you. That concludes the items for individual consideration. Moving on to staff and board reports. Item six A, receive the D.C. EDC Quarterly Report. Mr. Mansell.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had, this is maybe a little bit longer than just a quarter, perhaps half a year, if you will. It's been a busy, busy year, half-year, particularly as we're looking at the end of the calendar year. So, first, I just want to start off by saying just thank you for your support of us as staff, as the EDC, in doing this. You know, we're finding ourselves, at least, and I don't want to speak too much anecdotally, but we're finding it easier to do our job with the, things like the policy change that might not seem monumental, but, because at the end of the day, we're just changing some language about things that we could technically do already. But to the developer community, to external clients that we're trying to recruit, that we go on outreach trips to do, and just being able to say, hey, look, we have the political support, we have the community support to make your business successful in Duncanville, that means a lot. And that's a great marketing tool for us as well, in addition to a practical tool of being able to incentivize projects like we brought before tonight, just as an example. Scooters, for example, I know that kind of started prior to, you know, my arrival. So, you know, I can't take too much credit for that. But, you know, for example, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, Retail Live, which is a major retail conference every year in Austin, back when they first re-approached us, we met with the Vice President of Real Estate for Scooters at Retail Live, and we got to talk to him about the franchisee, and we were able to talk about, hey, look, you know, whatever you guys need to be successful, we're behind you. And that means a lot to them, you know. And I don't want to say too much, but they're actually interested potentially in opening additional franchises if this one's successful. And so, we're already, you know, nothing, you know, written in stone in terms of a commitment. But, you know, they like how we do business. And that was one of the things that we heard a lot historically, that, you know, we can, we're not the easiest city to work with, and we're starting to change that perception. And so, I just want to, you know, but at the end of the day, we just bring projects to you guys. You approve it, right? So, I just want to say thank you for your support of us as staff and.
Well, understanding it well, that you justify those projects to us.
Yes, sir.
We're not a rubber stamp council.
Absolutely, yeah.
Your documentation is well-supported. Your arguments are well-supported. We understand that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And so, looking at our policy, to start the presentation, under our previous policy from July 2021 to July 2022, we, Wheatland Plaza not being a traditional grant, in our, in our policy, we have design incentives. That is sort of our nomenclature for a regular economic development incentive, kind of your bread and butter tool in regards to economic development. So, in terms of the bread and butter grants, in one year, we only approved one. And this was the Mitchell Commercial Properties redevelopment on South Alexander. In the renew, revised policy, in a five-month period, we approved three-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand dollars in incentives. So, pretty major change just by altering our policy. And with the grants that were approved tonight, that figure actually comes up to four-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand dollars. So, just shy of half a million reinvested in Duncanville in a six-month period. A part of that redevelopment, we're, of course, still working with our business owners to start redeveloping the city, beautifying it. So, one of the things I want to highlight is Redbird Bowling Lanes. They have already repainted the exterior of the building. And it doesn't stop there. It can be that conversation with them down the road about redoing their parking lot, you know, additional landscaping, additional signage, right? It's not just the one-off grants. Additionally, one of our applicants that was successfully approved was a Singletale along Wheatland Road. They had been cited for their paving. They needed to repave their parking lot. We were able to work with them. And as you can see, a lot of the potholes and things like that, that are, that are visible from Wheatland have been filled. And in addition to that, they now have additional ADA accessibility in the back of the building to help their customers easily access the building as well. One project along Main Street as well, we were able to work with the client. We didn't incentivize this one, but we did work with the property owner to fill this space. So, we're not just helping our current businesses, but we're helping new businesses be successful in Duncanville as well. And then, D Squared Catering, the applicant earlier, they're repainting the exterior. They've restriped the fire lane and the parking stalls for the cars. And then, we're hopefully looking at additional landscaping, signage down the road as well. A part of our outreach is being able to take these successful stories and share them, saying, hey, look, we, you know, we have, we have the support to be able to make your business successful here versus a lot of the other municipalities that we have to compete with. So, a part of that outreach is internal, real estate roundtables. Before, we went to the ICSC Conference in Las Vegas in the later part of the last calendar year. We met, we tried to meet with all of the either property managers or property owners of all of our major retail centers in town, many of whom, ICSC stands for the International Council on Shopping Centers. And so, it would only make sense that we meet with the shopping center representatives before they went there. And from that event, we actually successfully networked with a developer. It's still in the negotiation phases, but you will be briefed on it if it, you know, moves forward. Project Skyline, you might see it every once in a while in the weekly update. So, we're still working on that. But that was a direct result of, you know, flying out there, going to all the different workshops and, you know, networking events, and just shaking as many hands as we can, just trying to get the Duncanville brand out there. And so, TEDC annual conferences, learning the best practices from our colleagues, economic development colleagues, what they're doing in other cities that might be able to help us be successful here. And then, you know, just outreach to our businesses. In our strategic plan for FY22, we had the goal of reaching out to eighty businesses. We contacted at least a hundred and Uh, we contacted at least a hundred and twenty-four. Um, that's just the ones that are tracked in our internal system. That does not include the ones that are just, you know, they call us directly, cold call, pick up on the phone, those kind of conversations. I haven't been interested in the system yet. Um, this is, uh, you know, not to be, uh, I guess controversial in, uh, the next couple of slides, but I just did want to kind of maybe tease some, uh, coming soon's, if you will, you know, some previews about what we're working on. Um, I know I can't probably take a show of hands, but I'm sure if you've driven up and down Main Street, you've probably seen, uh, this, uh, fifth wheel, uh, outside of Cox Farms. Um, we're currently working with the owner, um, through the health code process to get it up and running, but it is going to be a coffee trailer, a mobile coffee trailer. Um, when this is successful, it'll be the first permanent food truck in Dunkinville that's not attached like a special event permit. Uh, so we're pretty excited about that. Can't say too much with this and, uh, but I'm sure you probably recognize the, uh, uh, the uniform. Um, but we're working with the, uh, the franchisee and the developer to get that business up and running and then also the business on the left. Um, again, you know, can't speak too much to the identifiable, uh, brands, but, you know, we're pretty excited about those as well. And so, um, in terms of new development, um, we're pretty excited about, uh, Clark Road. Um, Clark Road has emerged as a soon-to-be pretty major retail corridor in Dunkinville. Uh, we usually talk about Daniel Dale, Camp Wisdom, Main Street, sixty-seven, I twenty. We usually don't talk about Clark Road. And it has, um, turned into, uh, and it's going to turn into quite the powerhouse. Uh, the Chipotle is up and running and it's doing enormously successful. Um, Scooters Coffee, um, isn't on Clark Road, but it is, you know, kind of up, you know, near the high school on Camp Wisdom. Uh, but the Dunkin Donuts that is going in that center, the Baskin Robbins, Little Caesar's, um, those are, uh, going to be opening very soon. I believe their certificate of occupancies have been issued and so they should be operating and generating us, um, plenty of sales tax soon enough. And then also, uh, retention, um, if you haven't had the opportunity to visit Kim and Jenny's diner yet, I would encourage you to. Um, again, that was something that we were able to retain here through our investment in Wheatland Plaza. Uh, and then we were able to keep D squared here as well, um, not at Wheatland Plaza, but elsewhere in the city. And then just to, uh, conclude on Wheatland Plaza, as you again know, it was approved for the P D recently. And it goes back to some of my, uh, big opening comments on this item, um, about our partnership, obviously as staff, you know, um, going out and making these projects. A lot of these projects aren't just their face value. Um, Wheatland Plaza, uh, it's obviously fantastic that the facade is being improved, the apartments will go up. Um, you know, the, the new, uh, retail users are going into those, uh, you know, those, those slots as well. Um, but it's a, a bigger message of what we're capable of in Dunkinville. Um, as you'll see on this slide, all those businesses are watching what we're doing today, tomorrow, yesterday, historically, and what we're going to be doing in the future. So it's not just, you know, what can we do to improve our community? All these entities are looking at what we're capable as well. And so Wheatland Plaza and a lot of our other projects are proof of concept. It's proving not only what we're capable of, but also dispelling some of the myths that, you know, well, your rent rate isn't high enough. Well, you know, Wheatland Plaza is going to get Class A, uh, rents, you know, that you could only really find in places like, you know, the downtown, you know, uh, Central Business Districts and things like that, or Frisco, Los Colinas. You know, we're, we're proving that if you downside these, you know, if you use these principles and you downsize and you put the right user in that space for the right size, they can generate, you know, a high enough rent per square foot, you know, to make these businesses successful. So it's not just these projects, but it's the vision. Um, a lot of our conversation has been the town center, connecting Wheatland Plaza, not just as a one-off, but connecting it to Armstrong Park, connecting it to Main Station in our downtown. And it's making this really wonderful, walkable town center organically. Um, and it's ultimately just putting our money where our mouth is, that we're communicating to them. You know, if you have the right project, we'll make it happen, you know, um, that we, we want to be successful. There's the desire for these projects and they can be successful because we've done it and we're capable of doing it. Just to finalize some of these items, um, the special event planner interviews will be concluded and hopefully a decision will be made by the end of the year. And again, that will, uh, enormously help us in our outreach and our marketing efforts. Um, and then the hot tax grants below were approved, uh, previously as well. So I will finish with our finally finished, uh, I didn't know this was going to be the thumbnail, so I'll sit on that for right now. Um, but our asset video is complete. Um, again, it's a part of that marketing effort. It's a part of showing what we can do in our community. And so if I will ask Alex to help me get that up and running, we'll debut that tonight as well. And just a item of notes, um, while we're watching this, it's, again, these are not one-off things. This is a part of a, a broader marketing strategy. Um, many videos, we'll follow this, um, items from this.
You don't have to go to the edge.
There we go. Um, so we're very, and again, it goes back to those comments where these things are only possible because of your support and your trust in us as professionals to affect the positive change that we're wanting to see. So I'll turn it over.
You don't have to go to the edges of D F W to find new business opportunities. There is a city in the heart of Dallas-Fort Worth where hometown meets urban access and it's waiting for you.
Dunkinville, the city of champions, is open for business. We have a strong and powerful economic engine and we've assembled a superb team to give new businesses the environment necessary for sustainability and prosperity.
From opportunity and redevelopment areas to tailored business retention and expansion programs, the city of Dunkinville is committed to being pro-business and pro-growth. From retail and restaurants to professional services and everything in between, there's a perfect spot waiting in Dunkinville. The city has an established community and they are excited about the growth.
We lived here in Dunkinville since two thousand. We love living here because the communities are amazing. The schools are great and there's always something to do around here. We're excited to see new businesses come to Dunkinville and we're excited to see the city grow for the next twenty years.
What makes the city a great place to have a business is that it's a great place to live. The lower cost of living, fantastic schools, central location and beautiful nature make Dunkinville a uniquely special place in D F W.
I opened Roma's in Dunkinville, October twenty-sixth, two thousand eleven. The support from the community here in Dunkinville has allowed us to grow throughout the years tremendously. I'm happy to see the city of Dunkinville follow through on their commitment to bringing new businesses and supporting the current businesses.
D F W is growing incredibly fast and we're right in the middle of it all. We are where opportunity meets history, where hometown meets urban access. Dunkinville is more than just a city. We are a destination.
And that concludes the D C E D C quarterly report.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done. That's been a long time coming, since we've had something to be able to put out on a thumb drive and be able to give to somebody and say, come to Dunkinville.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
It's desperately needed and to have that quality of a, of a presentation available, kudos. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. And concluding our city council meeting for tonight. Very briefly, we will have the monthly financial report, won't we?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city managers. It's good to see y'all this evening. I'm still awake. Um, I'm here tonight to give you the, uh, September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two financial report. Uh, we're going to take a look at the general fund. For general fund, uh, the revenues, uh, came in at thirty-four million. And remember, these are unaudited numbers, so until we go through the external audit, uh, these numbers will not be final. But they are close, if not, um, next to the final. Um, in the general fund, you see the property tax revenues were at a hundred and four point four percent. Uh, we have sales tax that were four point two percent below the revised budget, just shy, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars shy of the projected budget. The original budget, we actually met, um, the actuals came in at what it was supposed to. On the franchise fees, we are still kind of reviewing that for affordability to fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, so they are a little, little shy. But we are still reviewing those revenues at this point. Uh, if you look at the other sources of revenues for the general fund, you'll see that we came in way above, uh, the budgeted amount. And that revenue source includes like auction proceeds, rental income, refunds, insurance proceeds or recoveries and reimbursements from other cities. Uh, looking at the expenditures for general fund, we were thirty-three point eight million dollars, uh, of expenditures for the year. A little bit under the, the budgeted amount, so at thirty-six million, we are projected for the end of the year. So we are a little, we're under the budget, the budgeted amount. When you look at the unaudited ending fund balance for general fund is fifteen point four million. So we added about a hun- about a hundred and eighty-three thousand to the fund balance for general fund this year. The city has a general fund ending fund balance as a hundred and sixty-four days of expenditure coverage. That means that if we had no income coming in, we'd be able to, uh, cover the city and per- and cover bills and stuff for a hundred and sixty-four days. If you look at that use of fund balance report, you'll see we've spent a hundred and seventy thousand. I can tell you that the police project, we've spent some more in fiscal year twenty-three. So that two mil- two point eight million that we put aside or two million that we put aside for them is being spent. We're going on to the utility operating fund. If you look at the actuals for the utility fund, we're at seventeen point nine million, which is above our budget for this year. So there's a hundred and three point eight percent that we came in over budget for revenues. Expenditures are under the budgeted amount at sixteen point eight percent and that is like a seventeen below, seventeen percent below the expenditures. We did, uh, decrease the transfers in this fund to the C I P fund mostly uh, because we knew we were not going to be able to do some of those projects. This is the C I P. This is where all the C I P projects are done for the water and wastewater utility. And we spent over two point nine million dollars for projects in the utility fund. The utilities, Economic Development Fund is the next fund. And we ended the year with five point one million in fund balance for the utility, for the Economic Development Fund. And next is the Fieldhouse Fund. This fund, we had a, a net loss of a little over ten thousand. And so you'll see what it a- did to the, uh, ending fund balance for the year. Next is all the other funds. We have special revenue funds that we come in through the year. You can, uh, take a look at those. Most of those are doing pretty well. Um, I call attention to the PEG fund, that that's a new fund that we have for the year. There's a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, uh, in that fund. Uh, and also we have the ARPA fund, uh, fund seven fifty-eight. That is where we did get the second round of the ARPA at four point eight million. It is not recorded in twenty-two, it is actually recorded as revenue in twenty-three. Basically, this year, we received it September twenty-sixth, so it's, it's recorded as what we would call deferred revenue because we're not able to actually budget to spend the money until twenty-three. And then you have the debt service and capital project funds. Uh, if you look at fund twenty-six, you will see that's where most of the project fund and, and your fire station money are being spent on capital projects. You can see the balance on that. And the last but not least is our enterprise funds. There are two of those. It's the drainage fund and the sanitation fund. And those are, um, they, they do have in the year with the fund, fund balance. Any questions? I know I went through that kind of fast, but I know we are near the end of the night and I know that you guys don't want to see a whole lot of numbers. But this is give you overall synopsis that the city is doing well. Um, all the funds are doing well. It's still in good standing.
Well, you kind of took the words out of my mouth. I'm saying this is only one fiscal month. It's the first fiscal month. And so looking at that and saying, going back to that very first slide, you know, looking at all those revenues being at a hundred-plus percentage gives us maybe an unwarranted comfortable feeling. I don't want to get too comfortable with that number, uh, because we're just starting out. But looking at those numbers and saying, you know, were we soft in the budgeting or were we conservative and things are doing better than we anticipated? Or was it really we did the right thing and things are better than we thought? Going back to that very first slide with your general fund, everything's over, it's rev- all the revenue is over a hundred percent in terms of what you expected to have.
And in the general fund, we are doing, when you look at the percentage of budgeted, most of those are close to hundred, over a hundred, a little under.
That's what I'm referring to. Yeah.
So it's good, it, it is good, uh, performance on the general fund. Uh, all the revenues came in just about what we expected. We did do a different projection on this fund. We changed, uh, we projected upwards some of the numbers, especially sales tax. Um, there's the adopted budget and then there's the revised budget. This is the, based on the revised budget.
Okay. All right. Very good. Any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, thank you very much. And bringing that to the conclusion of our business for the night, uh, we are adjourning. Timestamp is ten oh eight P M. Thank you very much for your time, your patience and being with us.